I'd like to call to order the December 4th meeting of the Instruction Work Group of the Madison Metropolitan School District Board of Education. And the first order of business are public appearances, and we have two public appearances. Marcia O., followed by Chris Gomez Schmidt. And if you want to go sit there and make sure the green light is on, and let me know when you're ready, and you'll have three minutes. So make sure the green light on the microphone is on.
It's on.
Okay, so let me know when you're ready, and we'll get you started for three minutes.
All right, I'm ready.
Go.
My name is Marcia Ushakov. I am currently the reading interventionist teacher at West High School. I've been there for four years. Previous to that, I've been in the school district as a regular teacher for about 20 years. I started in the early 90s. The question I want to ask you guys is what district-wide systems are in place as we use our MAP data to monitor the reading student achievement, student by student, not school by school, but also school by school? And to provide support for the schools, the teachers, and the students that need it? And especially to help students who score in the bottom percentiles, who will need an intervention which is significantly different than differentiation. I was a TAG coordinator, Talented and Gifted Coordinator, for years at Hamilton, and I have extensive background in the Talented, Gifted, and Differentiation training and teaching of teachers. And now I'm an interventionist, and they are significantly different. We need interventions to serve the lowest-scoring kids that we have. Here's my data from this year, and this is why I'm here. Of the 65 students, plus or minus, it kind of changes, this year, 24 of them are regular ed students. In other words, they don't have an IEP, so there is no excuse for them to be in a reading intervention, in my mind. 12 of those 24 have been enrolled in Madison schools since pre-kindergarten or kindergarten. 12 students have been in Madison schools. They have high attendance. They have been in the same feeder schools. They have not had high mobility. There is no excuse for 12 of my students to be reading at the first, second, or third grade level, and that's where they're at. And I'm angry, and I am not the only one that's angry. The teachers are angry because we are being held accountable for things that we didn't do at the high school level. Of those 24 students, 21 of them have been enrolled in Madison for four or more years. Of those 24 students, one is Caucasian. The rest of them identify as some other ethnic group. I am tired of the district playing what I call whack-a-mole. In other words, a problem happens at Cherokee, boom, we bop it down and we fix it temporarily. And then, boom, something at Sherman, or something at Toki, or something at Falk, and we bop it down, and it's quiet for a while, but it has not been fixed on a system-wide level. And that's what has to change.
Thank you very much. Chris, I thought you knew the routine.
I thought I'd wait to be called.
Let me know when to start the timer.
Okay, I'm ready. I'm here to talk just briefly about the strategic framework. I know this is the first pass at looking at the goals and metrics for accountability, and so I'm really here to listen tonight and learn more, and see what the intention is behind this going forward. But one of the things I would like to say is that I'm worried about, in the effort to drive simplicity, losing some of the needed differentiation of accountability that exists right now. Jen, when you arrived in the district, I truly, truly appreciated having both the proficiency goals and the growth goals for students in place. And the reason I think that's important is because proficiency shouldn't be a finish line for every school, every student in the district. Proficiency is just sort of a metric along the way, and there are a lot of students that start above proficiency every school year, and if that's the goal, then they've already met the goal before we've started. There's a lot of students below proficiency who may be making accelerated growth and still may not reach proficiency, and we're going to miss, I worry that we're going to miss actually seeing the progress that those students are making and being able to build on that. And I worry about it looking like a failure every year, not only for the teachers and the students, but for the district too. And so I just like to think very carefully about what metrics and what assessments we're using. I also worry about putting all the eggs in the basket of the FORWARD exam, relying on state assessments. I was very relieved that when all the turmoil was going on with the state assessments, that we had MAP in place as a consistent measure. Right now, we have five years' worth of MAP data, and I feel like if we get rid of that, it's going to be hitting a reset, and we have two years of FORWARD exam data. And so I would hate to lose that longevity, and it's probably still going to be used, but if it's not being used for public reporting, then I'm afraid it is going to sort of get lost in the process and in the discussion. So, thanks, and I look forward to the discussion.
Thank you. All right, the next order of business is approval of the minutes dated October 2nd, 2017. I'll entertain a motion.
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Laura, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Mary? That passes 5, nothing. I didn't hear Mary.
She's in a dead spot.
She's in a dead spot. All right. As the speakers indicated, or the second speaker indicated, the next item on the agenda is the goals and metrics for the next strategic framework. And Jen, superintendent, you want to introduce, and I understand that you and Bo are just you, or some combination?
Yeah, Bo and Andrew.
And Andrew apparently.
Yeah, Bo and Andrew are going to join me. Bo will take the lead, and I'm going to chime in as needed, but I will introduce, if that's okay. Welcome, Bo and Andrew. So, Bo, would you mind clicking to the next slide for me? I think you need to click all the way through until it's all there. Thanks. Keep going, keep going, keep going. There you go. A very highly animated slide. Before we get started, I want to just remind the board that we are on a journey this year to rewrite our strategic framework. That process is well underway, as you know. You kicked it off in October at the October Board Retreat, where we affirmed the vision for our school district, for every child to graduate, ready for college, career, and community. The idea being that ought not change, not to change, that that's still what we want for every single child in MMSD. We talked at great length about the core values that ought to help drive our decision-making, knowing that in many cases, there will be inevitably times when we have to make decisions where the answer is unclear, that the data doesn't point to exactly the right thing to do. And in those instances, we have to fall back on a set of core values for decision-making. That process led us to draft a set of core values that we've set to the side until our midstream February meeting. And that brings us to the next step of the process, which is to have a discussion about the goals and metrics that we use to measure progress in our district. We obviously want the goals to align with both our vision and our core values, but these are the measures by which we're going to hold ourselves publicly accountable in the next phase for MMSD. So it's a very important discussion, and one that the board's leadership is absolutely necessary. So we're going to share with you some best thinking today. It is, we ourselves still have questions and are working through some discomfort with where we are, but we look forward to hearing what you have to say about it, and that will help us make some more revisions, so that by February, when we come back to you, we'll be able to solidify the goals and metrics for the next framework. As a reminder, at that point, the board will kind of pivot and start to really get into a strategy discussion, right? What is the strategy we need to enact in order to reach our vision, to stay true to our core values, and to meet the goals that we've set for ourselves? So that's just a little reminder of where we are in the process. Bo is going to take the lead on the presentation, as I mentioned. We don't have a ton of slides, so we would love to answer clarifying questions along the way, but we'd like to wait until the end to open it up for a richer, fuller discussion. I hope that's okay with everybody here. And with that, Bo, I'll hand it over to you.
All right, thanks, Jen. Thanks, everybody, for having us here. So before we kick off, I think I'll just say a little bit about what we've worked on and what we're focusing on today. So as Jen said, we're thinking about that public accountability system right now, so district-level accountability, the kinds of things that we see in our annual reports. We know that the things we're talking about here are going to be foundational for a lot of the other ways that we use data, but we're not here talking about everything that we plan to measure or use for decision-making moving forward. So just because something isn't necessarily reflected in goals and metrics today doesn't mean it's not something important that we will use on a regular basis to make decisions, guide instruction, and see how we're doing. Really are just kind of keeping that focus on how that district-level system looks. So a little bit of background on how we came to the thinking that you're going to see today. So we took some time to review best practices from other districts. So we did look at what the 20 largest districts in the country were doing, and then we also just looked at some other districts that we'd heard good things about nationwide, so kind of collected a nice sense of a landscape of measurement right now. We also spent some time just looking at recent literature, so some of the new ideas that are out there, some trends that are emerging, and also spoke with experts we know at UW-Madison, people in the field that do this kind of work. We also spent a lot of time collecting internal input. So we've been working for the last several months on this project, and during that time, we've worked with our principals, school improvement partners, chiefs of schools, other central office leaders, who to this point have provided some thoughts, did some ideation exercises, weighed in on some of their ideas for goals and metrics, and had some discussions there to kind of help us craft some thoughts that we can use to continue that conversation. And then we just spent some time reflecting on our own experiences. So our team helped design the accountability system that's been in place for the past five years. We spent a lot of time working on it, and we think that day-to-day work has also given us some additional perspective on what we might want to do moving forward. So a few ideas that we wanted to put on the table to frame the conversation. We think that with this work on the strategic framework that we're undergoing this year, now's the time to consider changes with an open mind. Doesn't mean those changes have to be dramatic, doesn't mean we have to do something completely different, but in general, as we transition to a new five-year framework, we don't really want to change course on goals and metrics midway, so we think this is kind of a good pause point, to take a look at what we're doing and where we want to go. We also just want to focus on metrics that are really meaningful. So if something takes a little too much time to explain, it's really hard to build consensus and support around it, so we want to focus on things that resonate with our staff, with our board, with our community. In general, we feel that in systems like this, a lot of the time, less is more. We've seen examples of places using a lot, a lot of metrics, hundreds of pages of reporting, and when you do that kind of thing, it can be a little hard to tell a cohesive story about what's going on. Sometimes when we're measuring everything, it's easy to lose track of those things that we think are really meaningful. We also want to be clear that we're only recommending things today that we believe we can execute. So there are a lot of ideas out there in the field right now that people haven't necessarily figured out how to do in the best way yet. So everything you're going to see us talking about, although it's not necessarily done yet, it is all things that we think we could comfortably execute. We want to emphasize that the decisions we make are interrelated. So when we're building a system like this, it's not about going down a long list of metrics and saying, "I like this one, I like this one," but it's about thinking of a system. What works in a complementary way? How do we have metrics that work with goals, goals that work together? And finally, we just wanted to note that accountability systems and instructional decision-making can rely on different assessments, can rely on different sources of data. Just because something's not reflected as an accountability metric doesn't mean it's not something that we value as a district and use on a regular basis.
Yeah, I wanted to punctuate just a couple of those points, the one on less is more, and this last one about accountability versus instructional decision-making. We want you to just constantly remind yourself that what we're talking about tonight is what we hold ourselves publicly accountable, like kind of those top measures of progress. It doesn't mean that those replace additional data for decision-making at the district or school level. We still are going to need access to all kinds of data for decision-making, and an assessment system, a comprehensive assessment system to make formative decisions, one of our speakers talked about how important that is earlier tonight, is not the same thing as an accountability system. So they're certainly interrelated, and we want to make sure that they're not duplicative or that there aren't unintended consequences related to the two systems when it comes to the work of a classroom teacher, but they are different systems. So we'll try to draw out where they're related and where they're not throughout this presentation. This is why the accountability system, we think the idea of less is more, is really important.
So before we transition to what we've learned, as part of the background, we just wanted to share a reminder of the system that has been in place over the last five years. So what we see up on screen on this slide and the next are the current milestones that we have been using. So in primary grades, we've been looking at PALS, elementary and middle school, looking at MAP as our standardized assessments, high school level, looking at course failures, grades, college readiness, and high school completion. And those are all associated with goal number one, which is every student being on track to graduate. For our current goals, number two and three. Goal number two, thinking about challenging a well-rounded education. This is where we've used arts education and world language participation, advanced coursework completion at the high school level as well. And then goal three has focused on a positive school and district climate, and that's where we've used overall positivity on our district's climate survey for students, parents, and staff, broken out by the dimensions that we've used to organize questions.
Bo, if you don't mind, I want to chime in really quickly on this, just as a reminder, again, to the board and to the public, that most school districts don't report out annually on their own results. They allow the state to take on that role for them. It's actually not typical. They may have data posted publicly on their website. That's different from doing a really intentional annual report. So I just wanted to remind everyone that this is a commitment that we have made as a school system to our community. We don't think, I mean, we don't expect this to replace what's in the state accountability report card. We think that's important and has its own place, but we think it's very important that we report out on the things that we value and, yeah, we want to hold ourselves accountable with our public. This was our best shot at it, five years ago now. We've learned a lot, which is a good segue maybe into the next slide.
Yeah, no, that's a great transition point. And so as we talk a little bit about what we've learned, you'll hear us talking about things that we've seen in other districts, and generally, our review did tend to focus on larger districts, because that's where we tended to see systems like what we've been using. So districts around our size tend to not necessarily do things the way that we have been doing, as Jen said. So that's where a lot of our examples, not all, but a lot, came from. So when we look at the practices that are in place in the districts we looked at, we see that academic achievement is constant. It's at the forefront. There's a lot more options and examples for us to consider than some of the other things that we might be looking at measuring. We've also noticed that large districts almost always rely on proficiency, on state-standardized accountability assessments, when they use these public accountability systems. So we've been using MAP for a variety of reasons that we've already talked about a little bit tonight, some instability with the state assessment a few years ago. But in general, we see larger districts using that state assessment, so we're a little bit different in using one that we're choosing to administer as part of our system. We've also noticed that in general, districts, metrics, and measurement haven't really caught up to the desire for whole-child accountability. So I think the idea of measuring the whole child is something that we can all believe in and feel good about, and definitely is a very popular concept right now. But as far as examples of how to execute that, there's really not a whole lot out there right now. It's not really yet commonly used. You don't see it appearing at all in state-level accountability systems at the moment, so not a lot of non-cognitive measures being used in systems like ours. And finally, we think we've noticed that there really is beauty in simplicity in a lot of these systems. We've seen good results in places like Chicago with using really simple measures. Districts like Los Angeles have limited, limited sets of percentage-based metrics. So as we've been doing this work, we've had this idea of key performance indicators in mind, so thinking about the things that really do matter the most, and knowing that when we're measuring and reporting on too many things, it can really cause a progress monitoring system to get a little bit unwieldy and be harder to have a good sense of what's going on. So that's what we've learned from our background research, looking at other districts and literature.
I think I would add on this slide that just because we have state-standardized tests listed as a bullet point here, and we'll bring it up again later, doesn't necessarily mean that we love it and think in the end it's the best thing for our educators and our students. It is what we have. We're trying to figure out what is the best possible option right now, and while whatever system we come up with, we want to commit to using it for the next however many years the framework will be, three to five, depending on where we land. I think that we also want to be open to the fact that there is a lot of evolution happening right now with how to measure progress in school districts. We want to be paying attention to it. We want to influence it. Maybe we'll be able to drive it to some extent. I think that will be important.
So then transitioning a little bit to what we've learned from the input that we collected internally. So we've learned that there are some things about the current system that people like, and some ideas that are pretty popular among the staff we've talked to so far. So I think one key thing we learned is that if we make no other changes to the system we're using, we need to capture the graduate vision a little more explicitly. So the graduate vision was collectively created by our community, and we heard that it has resonated well, and people want to see the ideas, particularly the non-cognitive skills that we see expressed as part of the vision, be captured a little more explicitly than it ever has been. We also know that people like the idea of goals and metrics that counterbalance one another, so we don't want to recommend anything that focuses exclusively on student achievement, on proficiency scores, on assessments. We want to think about a system that gets at something a little bit more holistic than that. So we've also learned that there are some things that maybe haven't worked quite as well with the system that we've been using over the last few years. So in general, the first and third goals that we've been using, focusing on being on track to graduate and focusing on a positive climate, those have been pretty well-received, and generally, what we've heard is that people like those concepts and would like to see them continue moving forward. We've heard some more concerns about goal number two, and I want to be clear that it's not about people not desiring having a challenging and well-rounded education for our students. Of course, we all want to see that happen, but there have definitely been some challenges with how to operationalize that, how to measure that, and we haven't really heard a lot of consensus on how we might move forward and do that better. A lot of ideas in a lot of different directions, but not really a great sense of a particularly strong way to move forward along the same way that we have over the last few years. We've also heard that the PALS assessment that we've been using for early literacy has not been particularly popular with our staff. We've had some questions raised about whether we could explore an alternative option, might be a little less time-consuming, might be a little more useful to inform instruction.
Can you talk a little bit more about that? That's kind of out of the blue for me, that the PALS assessment not being less popular than other assessments, and also, we do have a state mandate around...
Feel free.
Sure.
Well, I'll start with the state mandate. So we did have, we have been using PALS because there was a state mandate to use PALS in particular.
Originally, yeah.
But now there's a...
The state changed that mandate, so now it just has to be a primary literacy screener that meets a certain set of criteria. PALS meets those criteria, so we've been fine continuing with it, but we believe there's a lot of other assessments that would meet that criteria, so the state mandate is to do something that meets that, doesn't have to be PALS.
Are there any districts currently using anything but PALS?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we didn't change it at the time, TJ, because we had just trained everyone on using PALS. It just seemed like, yeah, it would be more disruptive than anything. We wanted to give ourselves some time to think about it, but I think there have been questions and concerns about the quality of the tools themselves. I think the administrative burden, it's a lot, but early literacy assessments tend to bear that burden because they're administered one-on-one. Nevertheless, there are some that are easier than others, so I think it's worth taking a step back and making sure that this is the right...
I'm sorry for pausing you, but I just kind of, this is kind of a huge black box for me, so I mean, PALS has always been, oh, I need to learn more about that. I actually was, I was actually at the hearing when PALS was adopted, and I still didn't know. But a couple other questions. Is it somebody, is somebody that it's time-consuming and that it's burdensome in terms of administration?
Yeah.
And is somebody, is the utility of it also?
Yes.
And I guess that, you know, the one thing I say that's a black box for me, but one thing speaking of utility is that, would I, just from having skimmed through PALS results over the years, it seems to me that there's a great variability in the comprehension measures, but less variability in the other measures. And if we were to continue with PALS, perhaps zeroing down on some portion thereof, where there is variability and we can see, you know, I think speaking to one of our speakers tonight, that targeting where, you know, everybody's got a 75 on PALS, but some people have a 50 in comprehension.
Sure.
Understanding that that kind of subtlety and doing that, I understand that that's informing instruction, but I think also that whatever we do with strategic framework also informs priorities.
That's exactly right.
And so, but I'd be interested to hear what other, what the thinking is further on that. I don't have any great love for PALS. I'm just, as I said, it's somewhat of a black box.
Yeah.
Dean, something on this?
Thanks, because I was going to ask. Not as extensive as you just did, so that was helpful.
Yeah.
All right. Keep going.
Yeah, so another thing we've heard is that at the moment, MAP is not used consistently to drive instructional decision-making. So we know MAP is a useful assessment that does have the potential to help support instruction, but for whatever reason, at the moment, it just doesn't appear to be being used to drive instructional decision-making the way that we would like right now. I think some of the feedback we heard is that MAP's being viewed as a summative accountability assessment right now, and once something starts being used as a summative accountability assessment, then the ways that we use that for instruction might be interpreted a little bit differently. So in general, those are some things that are as close as we got to consensus around things that have been well-liked and things that we might want to think about doing a little bit differently. But in general, there hasn't been a lot of real consensus around most of the specific metrics, so I think we received literally hundreds of ideas for different things that we can measure. There's a lot that we know we could do, but this is our current thinking. So based on what we heard, based on what we've learned from other places, based on what we've been doing, we'll talk next a little bit about kind of where our thinking is as of today.
Before you move on, just one more comment on MAP. Lots of districts use MAP or an assessment, an adaptive assessment like MAP, as an instructional tool, a more formative or benchmark assessment. And I think one of the challenges that Bo did not name is that, just by the way the state test, remember, it used to be November was the testing window for the state test? And then it got switched to spring three years ago? That just the assessment burden now in the spring, students are doing their MAP assessment, well, we've done it two different ways, followed directly by the state assessment or vice versa. And just the, not only the administrative burden, but the burden on students, quite honestly, when they're having to take both of those assessments back-to-back. I mean, it's just been a real challenge every year. So this might open up an opportunity for us to reassess whether or not MAP is needed, can be administered if we keep it in some other way. It just provides us yet another opportunity to think about the instructional assessment system differently, to make sure that it's actually useful for teachers, to helping them make the best possible decisions. All right.
Yeah, great. So, as we think about our current thinking, where we're at as of today, we want to start by emphasizing that where we are right now is not a wholesale change. We know there are a lot of things that have been working about what we've been doing, and so we're thinking of it as an evolution of what people have liked about the current system. And so we're thinking of it as an evolution of what people have liked about the current system with also some changes and some additions to reflect some of the feedback we've received, not just over the past few months, but really over the five years that we've been doing this work. So thinking about the first goal that we are, that we're working with right now, it's that every child is on track to graduate ready for college, career, and community. So this is a really minimal change from the first goal that we've been using before. But in general, we received a lot of good feedback about how that's been working. So under that goal, we're thinking about four different metrics. So the first and second go together a little bit because there are ways of thinking about K through 11, reading and math proficiency. So I'll note here that grade two, we do have PALS on the slide right now. But as I mentioned, you know, we do want to think a little bit more about exploring alternative options. We don't necessarily know what that would be yet, so that's definitely something that we need to put a little more work and thought into. But we want to put on the table that we're going to think about it and whether there might be something else that we'd want to try. So the key thing to note here is that when we're thinking about early grades, we're thinking about something that we'd want to look at at the end of grade two. We know there's a lot of challenges in measuring early literacy, a lot of really variable development at the primary ages. So we're not thinking about using an accountability metric right now before thinking about the end of grade two, the end of that primary experience. So when we look at grades three through eight here, this is where you'll see one of the more noticeable changes in what we're looking at here. So right now, we're thinking about what it would look like to move forward using proficiency on the FORWARD assessments. So again, we've mentioned MAP and some of the concerns that we've had. But we want to explore FORWARD, I guess for a variety of reasons. But chief among them, our FORWARD is explicitly a mandated summative assessment. So this is something that the state is requiring us to do on an annual basis. So we want to think about how we can use that productively. You know, we do want to think kind of about how the state holds us accountable as well. You know, DPI recently released school and district accountability report cards within the last few weeks. And that system does use results on the FORWARD assessments. We know there are federal report cards coming in the future, but again, they're likely to use results on the FORWARD assessments. We know when families go looking for data, they'll often end up at places like WISE Dash, which is a DPI reporting tool that shows the FORWARD assessment. So we know that, you know, whatever our feelings have been about that assessment, accountability systems right now use it. It's the way the state's holding us accountable. It's the way the public views a lot of our results. And it really lets us put ourselves in perspective to relative to the state, relative to other districts in a way that we haven't been able to do quite as much with MAP. We think another benefit there, as Jen alluded to, is that depending on what we do with MAP or other formative assessment as part of that comprehensive assessment system in the future, could reduce time spent on assessment for our staff, for our students, and give back some instructional time there by leveraging something that we are already mandated to do, whether we choose to have it in our own accountability system or not. So then thinking about grades nine through 11 for both reading and math, we're thinking about a continuation of using the ACT/ASPIRE assessments. So ACT being given in grade 11, ASPIRE being given in grades nine and 10. So following a similar logic to what we were thinking about with FORWARD, ACT and ASPIRE are state-mandated right now. So again, that's something that we will be doing every year, whether or not we choose to have it part of our accountability system. The change that you'll notice is that over the past five years, we've been using reading college readiness. We think there's some recent research that's come out that suggests that English might be a little bit more predictive of graduation, post-secondary success and things like that. So small shift there from reading to English, but generally the same idea. So looking at our third metric here, that's our four-year completion rate. So a four-year completion rate, which includes graduates with a conventional diploma plus anyone achieving credential through alternative means, is a pretty standard way to think about district progress. Again, it appears in all those state systems. You'll see most districts using this. It doesn't mean we don't continue as a district to look at and think about things like a six-year rate. But the four-year rate is what we're looking at, having in the system right now. So the fourth metric here is a suggestion of something new that we haven't captured before. So I mentioned earlier that we got a lot of feedback around capturing the graduate vision, that people really want to see that happen. So because the graduate vision was developed within our community, there's not exactly an assessment that we can go out and find that's going to help us think about student progress toward meeting those goals. We also know that although there hasn't been a lot of work around measuring social, emotional, and noncognitive skills, there has been some. And the early work in that area, we think indicates that student self-reports of development towards some of these qualities that we want to see them developing are pretty promising. They've tended to correlate pretty well with teacher ratings and other things. And so we think, you know, allowing student voice here through self-reports as we think about being on track to achieve that graduate vision, administering a student survey where our students tell us what they're thinking. We don't know exactly what that's going to look like yet. Obviously, that's something that we'd develop over time. But just bringing the concept forward now of capturing the graduate vision that way.
What's an example of self-report?
Oh, we would administer the survey to students. They'd fill it out themselves.
Survey students directly?
Yep. So they would say how they, yeah.
So creativity is one of the elements of the graduate vision. There would be some question or set of questions around their ability to use creativity to solve problems. I'm completely making that up, but yeah.
Right. But yeah, so we know the vision is being used in our schools and there has been some internal work around kind of benchmarking that vision backwards that could help us inform how we would, how we think about that.
There's interesting work out there. Camille Farrington comes to mind from the University of Chicago, the consortium who developed a survey tool to measure noncognitive skills. And there's some things that have certainly been tested out there that we could draw from, adopt, adapt, who knows? Yeah.
So that's the set that we have, the way we've been thinking about goal number one at the moment. So transitioning to goal number two, we phrase this goal as the district and every school in it being a place where children, staff, and families thrive. And so under that, we're also thinking about four metrics. So we have used overall climate survey positivity in the past, broken out by dimension. The idea we're thinking about moving forward is whether we might want to transition to using what we're calling power questions. So basically, the percent that are agreeing with individual questions from that survey. We're thinking about that right now because we think it improves the clarity of the measure and our communication to think about really these specific areas, these specific concepts, rather than relying on those overall constructs. So we do want to mention right now, the questions that we have up here, we have focused on ideas of belonging, morale, being part of a positive environment. These are questions that are currently part of the climate survey we have been administering. So we have a little bit of a history on these measures as well, so we can think about areas that we might want to work to develop a little further. But we know that these may not necessarily be the final questions. So a lot of what we want to talk about here is just this concept of transitioning to using power questions for each survey as opposed to overall positivity. Yeah, and using questions like that, it wouldn't change administration and data availability for the full climate survey that we have been using as a district. We'd still administer a full survey, still make it all publicly available at mmst.org/climat as we have now, still available for schools to work with. But just focusing on those power questions as part of that district-level accountability system.
And we would suggest that you don't get too hung up on these particular questions, but maybe think about them as examples of the concept.
All right. So the third goal that we're thinking about right now is something that wasn't part of our prior system. And that's a goal to accelerate progress for our African-American children and youth. And so we're bringing this forward as a potential goal right now because as we look at the district results over the last five years, we've seen some things that we can feel really good about. But in general, African-American student results, on average, historically have been lower than all the other student groups that we've been looking at over time. We have seen improvements in some of our African-American student results, but we've sometimes seen even faster improvements for white students, English language learners. So even as everybody's been improving, we've been watching some of those gaps actually increase over time. So we don't know if additional metrics are necessarily required as part of this goal. We could use some to kind of zero in on. But at the moment, you know, we're thinking of it as an explicit commitment to focus on, elevate results for our African-American children and youth alongside district overall results. When we're thinking about those hard copies of the annual report, the reporting that we do, making that very clear. Where our focus is and, yeah, just really making that commitment for a focus where we maybe have historically not served these students as well.
And I have an idea that I'll only present as my own along this line. If we were to choose additional metrics, I would suggest only a small number, kind of in alignment with the power question idea, like a set of power metrics that are about not just African-American achievement, but access, right? You could do a metric on kindergarten readiness. You can do one on reading, right, by third grade. You could do one for ninth grade on track, where we know African-American students are most likely to be off-track as examples. Access to advanced learning support, access to advanced coursework, right? Like you could zoom in on a small number, three to five additional power metrics to hold ourselves additionally accountable.
Yeah, and I want to reiterate that as we're thinking about this system, over the past five years, we've disaggregated results by race, ethnicity. We've looked at low-income students, students with disabilities, English language learners, advanced learners as part of our standard reporting. We wouldn't change any of that. That would all be things that we would continue to focus and plan around. I apologize, in my haste to get to goal three, I skipped over the fourth metric under goal number two here. And that's looking at the percent of students with 90% attendance or better. So that's, again, a metric that we haven't been using over the past few years. So when we think about chronic absenteeism, you generally think of students missing 10% or more of school. So this is really just the inverse of that, the percent of students who have 90% attendance or better. We know there are mixed opinions on how much a school can affect attendance rates. But we do think there's research that suggests that, you know, if a school is a positive place where students want to be and students want to be part of that community, in general, you'll see them coming to school more often. So again, this is something that would be in addition, but we think it's a good indicator of engagement and a positive environment.
What I think I'd like to do to facilitate getting through this is, I think I'd like to, if, is work through slides nine through 11.
Yeah.
Kind of top to bottom and, you know, kind of try and stay focused on one piece at a time and then jumping all over the place. And then when we're done with that, slide 11 kind of naturally leads us to the place of what's missing, what might be here that isn't here. And because slide 11 includes things that are, some of which have been taken out already, and then also that opens up to a discussion of what else would we like to see there. So if board members could cooperate in trying to stay focused in that way, I think that would be helpful and, you know, kind of a dialogue, you know, questions for clarity, but also questions for, you know, what do you think of kind of questions. And slide nine, the first two measures on slide nine involve, well, the PALS question, which I think is kind of, you know, hanging out there. And I think that I'll speak for myself and say that I think that I'd like to see what the options are and I'd also like to make sure that's also available in Spanish as well as English. Because the PALS, we were able to get, the PALS is in Spanish, so I think that that's...
That's partly why we stuck with that.
That's an important consideration for me. I guess the question is, does anyone else have any other thoughts on the PALS before we... Kate?
So this maybe isn't as specific around PALS, but I just, as I was thinking through kind of major student groups and how this would impact or evaluate accountability for those student groups, early childhood 4K kind of came up as something that I wasn't quite sure how it was captured. I wonder if it isn't worth pushing, given that grade two and then three through five are quite close realistically in terms of impact, if it isn't worth pushing that early measure actually earlier? I'm not sure it would be used for something slightly different, given that we wouldn't have had as long to work with a young person. But I wonder if there isn't something around access to 4K or, yeah, access to early childhood learning that might be valuable for us.
We currently do PALS one, two, correct? And then this would be dropping the one as part of the strategic framework measures?
Yeah, I let me...
For the strategic framework, yeah. I mean, we administer PALS 4K through two. For the strategic framework, it's been grades one and two.
Yeah, I've actually done quite a lot of work in this area, Cindy knows. And for a literacy measure, which this is, an early literacy measure, it is not valid or reliable to use for accountability purposes at KR1 because of the plasticity of early student learning. So we would only recommend a summative literacy metric. We would recommend that we keep, I would, end of grade two because these are basic literacy skills as opposed to straight-up grade-level comprehension, which is what the state standardized test assesses. They're very different assessments. Your idea of doing something about readiness, right, or access really early on, I think is intriguing and is something I would like to explore a little bit. Beth has been working a little bit on what we would even use to measure readiness. We used to have a kindergarten readiness measure. We're no longer consistently using that because of the switch to PALS. But a kindergarten readiness measure would likely not be a measure of literacy, right? It would be different, and I think that would be potentially really important for us. So, yeah, I think that's a suggestion worth really thinking about.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what the right, I mean, I certainly don't know the right decision is. But it is, it's a group of students that we have a massive opportunity with, and I would love to at least think through how to capture what that opportunity is and that would give us a little bit more visibility into improving.
Yeah, I mean, the only caveat that I would put out there is anything that we set a goal around means we have a strategy around. And I think that if we set a goal, something related to kindergarten readiness, right? I mean, it's maybe a good thing.
Absolutely.
That it's really going to push us to not only look at 4K, but look at the way we work with partners at birth to three, right? It sets the direction for some prioritization of actions in the next strategic framework, which is the point.
Which is exactly the point. That's precisely it. So I mean, I think it's probably one of the areas, is I think through all of the work that's been done over the last five years as a part of the strategic framework, curricular development, professional development, there's been a lot of improvements. And the racial gap that we have in achievement process, right? And so what are the additional things that we could do differently? Early, kind of early childhood intervention is probably one of the things we have done least on thus far.
Just while we're on the PALS, this, whether it's PALS or something else, I understand that we don't want to put a whole lot of weight on testing of kindergarteners and things like that. And we're going to return to a question of inclusion of some kind of growth measures. But this is a possible place where within the summative, taking a summative second grade out of context, that some kind of change from kindergarten to first to second grade, some kind of trajectory thing might be possible. And I don't know what's available and how that would work with PALS or a PALS replacement. But, you know, dropping three years, you know, out of, completely out of, out of an accountability system is... I mean, again, I don't want to put a whole lot of weight on kindergarten testing, but I think that we also know that reading by second grade is a key measure. And so having that hang out there is difficult. Some thoughts. The next two, if any more thoughts on PALS or early literacy or early screeners or access or something to capture 4K through two? All right. The next set is the replacement of MAP with FORWARD, essentially with both math and English. And then we can go to the ACT/ASPIRE if we need to. But I think that that's kind of the next big chunk that we need to talk about. And anyone have anything to say? Anna?
About FORWARD, about ACT?
Well, no, FORWARD. Let's do this one piece at a time. Let's try to be systematic tonight.
Yeah, my only concern around FORWARD is, yes, it's been around for two years, but I don't know. I haven't seen the state really make many moves to make public education more stable. And so putting ourselves in their hands, I get a little bit concerned about. So, but that's the only thing I would have to say.
James?
I guess it does concern me...
I guess it does concern me if we go to FORWARD where we have two years of data versus the MAP where we already have five years of data. And so that's a concern for me. Is there some way we can use FORWARD but also keep MAP? In terms of how we can use it and measure growth and all that. Do we want to, you know, rid us of the five years of data?
I will, yeah, I will put out there, James, it's worth knowing that we would likely have to reset norms on MAP anyway this upcoming cycle. We have resisted some renorming with MAP because we want to be able to actually compare from year to year. And, right, this is one of the challenges always with assessments and certainly assessments for accountability purposes. Every time they renorm, you know, either your test scores jump or they fall and you're starting over again. And so there is that. We would renorm. So there'd probably be some reset to some extent anyway, which we think is one reason that we're not so worried about it. Yeah.
I think another thing I'd note too is that N W E A, which is the vendor that does the MAP assessments, in January of 2017, they did a concordance study where they aligned MAP and FORWARD results. So it would allow us to look retroactively, apply FORWARD proficiency cutoffs to our history of MAP data. Obviously, that's not quite as perfect as actually having a history of FORWARD data, but their alignment work is generally pretty good. So we'd be able to back MAP that way if we wanted a deeper trend.
I think our biggest concern has been turnaround time with MAP. We get, you know, results immediately. And it's not too hard to turn it around for accountability purposes. And we haven't gotten FORWARD until later in the summer, which is a challenge.
So FORWARD is an annual assessment, right? And so MAP, we've done it twice a year.
Two and a half.
Three times. Yeah, beginning, middle, and end.
And so you're able to normalize FORWARD and MAP, although they're, one is twice a year. So later the two will make their comparison.
Yeah.
For end of the year.
I'd like to see that.
I raised, in our meeting, I raised the concerns about the access to the data and when we get access. And I think that that is, that if we want to stay on the schedule for doing an annual report in midsummer, that could be a real issue. I also have a question about, we can slice and dice the MAP data in lots of different ways. My data dashboard allows us to do, you know, multiple cuts. Would we have access to FORWARD data in similar fashion?
Yeah, we could do that.
I just didn't know what the state gave us and what's there and
Yeah, no, they give us a raw data file that looks a lot like what we would get from MAP.
And do it that way. My other, you know, first off, there's a huge part of me that says that we spend too much time on standardized testing and even MAP, which is a semi-formative assessment and a semi-summative. It is, I think at one point that it was presented to the board as something in between the two, a benchmark. I would love to drop it, period, and just do the FORWARD. But I do have concerns that the flexibilities that we have with MAP, that we would lose them. And some of the flexibilities are that we can do, we can look at things like cohorting. We can look at things like annual, you know, fall to spring that we can't do. I think that the timely access to data is an issue. And then the final concern is the FORWARD, the FORWARD is a product of a political process. And the MAP is a product of a research slash education process. And especially with the pending, the new will suit about administrative rules and related things, very, very easily, we could have the cut score setting and other aspects of MAP change, control, change radically. I mean, even, even the DPI process is politicized, but it could definitely become a more legislative and gubernatorial process very easily. And that concerns me greatly. Kate, do you have something to add to that?
No, when you're done, I
That was my thoughts for now.
Okay. How much time does staff spend on MAP and students, every?
Good question. So we could actually run some data on that because the amount of time it takes a student to take MAP really varies quite a bit. Since it is a computer adaptive assessment, it's not timed, so it
I mean, are we talking about a week over the school year that's dedicated, a day?
About four or five days.
Okay. I mean, I, look, this one's a tricky one for me. I completely see the value in aligning our accountability measures with the way that the rest of the world is evaluating and keeping us accountable. I think we're kidding ourselves if we think that MAP means anything to anyone else other than, you know, kind of the people in this room. So I completely see the value in aligning those measures. And I see huge value in giving staff back a week of their time and students back a week of their teachers. And I am reluctant to sign our lives away to the state any more than we have to, right? So, but I, you know, having another layer and another test in a world where we're already doing a lot of testing so that we can feel better about our ability to control it is, I think, to me, it's a question, is a week worth that? Is a week of staff time worth that? I don't know.
Do we have to align ourselves with the world in everything we do? Can't we have something that's basically that we feel strongly about?
We do, but I think parents in the, I mean, parents are
Well, of course, it's mandated, so we don't have to go there. But can we have a measure that we feel strongly about?
Yeah, we can, and we have.
And understand staff time and
Student time.
Student time and all the contributions. And understand people that are against measuring. I can go back six years ago when we didn't measure much at all. And we were, these gaps were being grown. So now we measure because we want to know exactly, you know, what, how our students are performing. So I'm not so much against the measurements for that reason, because we need to know how students are performing. And so I can feel for the time staff and our students are putting into it, but we need the information. And now, also, is it possible that we can have both measures? Maybe it's a subset, not necessarily, I mean, there's no reason why we can't look at the results of both of these, MAP and FORWARD. There's no reason why we can't. So, but I'm not sure we need to totally align ourselves with what the rest of the world is doing. I'm more or less want to align myself with, for example, entities that look like us. And I'm not sure, when we went out and did the comparisons with large districts, I think all data has some merit, but what, how are those large districts really similar to us? I don't know.
We did look, and they, many of them use MAP or some similar kind of internal benchmark that's aligned to standards, to grade level standards, but they don't use it for their public accountability systems. So they have both. They do the state test and they do this internal benchmark assessment. That's very typical, and that's certainly an option for us.
Anna?
Yeah.
My other comment around the FORWARD or the MAP, I do get concerned when we're only talking about proficiency. And I think people have raised that point before. TJ, I think you sent out a table earlier about us also reporting out on minimal, basic, proficient, advanced. I just feel like if we just talk about proficiency for a lot of different demographic groups, we're really not capturing much data to share with the public.
I'll piggyback on that, but first, the other thing about MAP is that there is, that in terms of just kind of what kind of dataset exists nationally, it's a huge dataset compared to, compared to, you know, two years of one state with the FORWARD exam. And a lot of districts do do both. A lot of MSAN districts actually report both MAP and whatever their state tests are. And so I think that, you know, if we're doing, if we're looking, I don't, you know, again, I would like to have fewer standardized tests, but this is a change that I'm not fully comfortable with. Secondly, just to pick up on what Anna said, is that, you know, what we identify in the strategic framework tells us what, it communicates to our community and it communicates to our staff and what's important to us. And I will say that the movement from below basic to basic, to me, is much, much more important than the movement from basic to proficient, which is what we're currently measuring. And they're both important, but if I had to choose one, that level of literacy and numeracy, functional literacy, functional numeracy, which is what that, which is what below basic to basic should communicate, or, you know, Evanston and MSAN district does a lot of their analysis around the bottom twenty-five percentile. And also the top twenty-five percentile, which also would capture some of the concerns of the advanced learning community. And they do, I mean, they do separate analyses for the middle fifty percent, the top twenty-five, and the bottom twenty-five. And I think things like that point, you know, communicate our priorities very clearly. And whether, you know, I think that in some ways, the move to an African-American set of things is a similar thing, that where are our priorities? You know, I've said before that my priorities are the students we're failing with. I mean, that's my number one. I've got a lot of other priorities, but that one rises to the top. And so the proficient and above, I'd be more comfortable with the basic and above as a measure.
Can I, can I
Yeah, you may.
No, I mean, I, this maybe gets to the open conversation at the end, but I kind of tried to take a look at this and think, does this, is this what success looks like, right? Like if we get a certain number on these things, does it tell us we've been successful with all of the student groups that we have articulated we want to be successful with, which is every student, right? But let's pick the ones kind of the biggest ones, right, so that we could articulate kind of a finite number instead of twenty-seven thousand, right? So, you know, if we hit a certain proficiency number on language arts or on the ACT, et cetera, does it tell us we've been successful with English language learners? Does it tell us we've been successful with students with disabilities? Does it tell us we've been successful with advanced learners? Or does it tell us that we've been successful with African-American students, right? Some of the major groups that I think we are very intentionally dedicated to improving instruction and outcomes for. So I think it does, and I think some of those, and that idea of targeted universalism, is there a single metric that might be better for some of those groups? Kind of in your same, on our goal number three, when we get there, is there a single metric that might get a little bit closer to articulating that we've improved, kind of, and achieved our graduate vision, right, for African-American students? Is there something similar for students with disabilities or advanced learners that might be more direct? And maybe that's not actually growth at every level, but maybe that's a single metric that's actually highly targeted at advanced learners. I don't know. I don't know the kind of systems well enough. But I, growth is pretty tricky if you're at the ninety-ninth percentile or the ninety-seventh percentile. I'm not sure what we get from growth at every measure. Potentially, there's a different one that would be better. I don't know. Maybe there isn't, and that's why we use growth, but but I would like to be able to look at these and say, yes, if we do that, we've been successful.
That makes sense. That makes sense. One of the things is we will be, all these will be disaggregated. And so there's some sense of that, that at least we have that kind of comparison going on. Other thoughts on FORWARD versus MAP or the proficiency versus other things? Or do we move on to the ACT Aspire ones?
Well, I'll just echo Anna's comment and the speaker's comment about proficiency. More or less in that camp. I don't need to elaborate on it anymore than has been talked about. But so I just want to support what's been put on the table in terms of proficiency conversation.
ACT?
Wait.
Oh, Dean, I'm sorry. I missed you.
It's okay. I, I'm struggling with, I think at some point, someone who's basic, scores basic on one of these tests could have a lot to do with interest and motivation at the test as opposed to a subject area that they were really interested in. Someone who's basic is probably all of a sudden proficient. And I don't know where that gets measured. So you take a dry-ass test like these things are, and no one liked them, and they sit there, they take up time, and there's attitudes already going on about them, and I don't think, you, I don't know how you factor in that measurement. How motivated was this kid to take this test at this time? Plus the teacher trying to, getting overwhelmed, trying to implement this thing. The mood gets picked up, and you know, it's like, just get the, just get the thing, get through the thing and so you can move on to the thing you really want to do. So I think, you know, we have to also understand, basic, what's the difference between someone being basic and proficient? Basic's pretty good. It's not bad. You can get by. You'll be able to survive. You'll be able to read everything. Be able to understand everything. You learn, if you don't understand, you ask questions. So basic isn't, isn't a failure. It's something that you're not motivated and interested in this thing, so you're just going through the motions with it. So I think, I don't know how much, how much credit we want to put into these things to begin with. So how reliable are they in reality? When this kid just, you give it to him, two days later, he scores way different. So I have always had trouble with these types of things. So I don't want to put too much emphasis on someone who just doesn't quite make proficient. But he was right there. You know, that's good. He did okay. And tomorrow, you can do, get, answer that one or two questions better and you'll be proficient all of a sudden. Meh, you know, you're fine with me.
Cut scores.
You know, so I have problems with all this, and I don't have, I don't know, know required to do something. I don't know if we could find that thing and said, if we hit this, you're doing good. Well, yeah. I've got more to say about the next slide.
I think what we'll take from that is going back to considering options for measuring growth in addition to proficiency. So, I think that's the general
Want to come back to growth at the end too, so that's one of the things that are missing categories, but
Okay.
Thoughts on ACT, anyone? ACT Aspire, Anna?
Thought is, I'm just wondering, I was looking at the special education plan from last year, and it said nineteen percent of students with IEPs took the reading. ACT, grade eleven, and ten percent took the grade eleven math. So I am just wondering how that will capture students that aren't actually taking the ACT.
Great question. Mm-hmm.
And historically, we've had African-American students in poverty and Hispanic-Latino students with lower participation rates in the ACT in particular, better on the Aspire, but the ACT because of the test security issues, that if you miss it, you miss it. And so we've had issues there. Bo said this last, in pre-mating, you said that last year's numbers were good. If we could get some kind of, what's the test participation rate on the Aspire and the ACT? Because if, you know, if seventy, eighty percent of our students are taking it, that's twenty percent we're missing.
We actually do have an annual report, a series of annual reports the board will get in the next two weeks.
Okay, good, good.
That will include ACT as well as participation rate in ACT.
Okay, good, because, yeah, I just know in the past that we've had some participation issues. And I, and I don't know the current state of it.
So a series of annual reports, how long is the series? I mean, I saw ACT scores one time for like fifteen years. That's great. So what are we talking about here? Because for me, when you start looking at two years, you can't really see trends. I mean, you know, one point is not a trend. So, I mean, we need fifteen years of data, for example. Let's look at it and let's see, you know, how we're moving.
Yeah, when I said, when I referred to a series annual report, so it's PALS and MAP and ACT are the three that I'm referring to. When possible, we also have a five-year series, so the ACT is a five-year series and, yeah.
And just keep in mind, that has changed because of universal administration of ACT. And so test participation in ACT has changed actually pretty dramatically over the last five years. It is better than it's ever been, but we're still not testing everybody, right, to your point, which is important. I'm assuming you guys all saw that slide that we didn't I'm assuming you guys all saw that slide that we didn't go over, which was all the things that are no longer in the system, the most dramatic changes. Oh, I didn't think we were going to go over it. I, I'm, I don't think we actually should. I think it's good background information, but it's worth knowing what's fallen out of the high school metrics.
I think we should have the opportunity to pull, pull out of anything from there that we want to. I mean, yeah, I mean, I think that, that's, that's, that's what I, that's what I meant by, we'll get there. Kate?
On the forward piece, would it be possible to get the backtracked forward and MAP trend line, just so that we could have that to look at? To see how they map together and how similar or different they are? And just a rough sense of what the options are moving forward? If we were to, we obviously have to continue with forward. If we were to continue with MAP as well, is there any way to reduce the number of administrations from three to, right? What, what would that look like? So.
Four-year completion rate. We're not going to do this with every line, but I think that these are kind of the key ones. Going once. All right. I think we're talking, now is the graduate vision self-reported survey discussion. I read the linked article, and I saw a lot more caveats there than, than, than your presentation had. I, I saw a lot, I mean, there was a sense that, there was a lot of districts have to decide whether this additional information is worth the effort. There was a lot of that. And that it was, you know, that, that this accounts for four percent here and six percent there of variation. And, and I remember something about the Chicago Consortium from about, I don't know, about two years ago, a year ago, also just saying that we don't know how to measure yet. That, I mean, we don't know how to measure yet. And when we talk about time for students to take tests, I think also times for students to take surveys is a relevant issue. And what I saw was a heavy, heavy correlation between the climate survey results and the, and the, and the social emotional learning, that there wasn't, that one wasn't added, that they weren't identical results, but there wasn't a whole lot being added. So I'm, I am not against, but I'm not convinced yet on, on, on this. And if you could, you know, I appreciate you linking to the article. If you've got other things you want to throw our way, I'd appreciate that also, because I'll, I'll dig into it, and, and maybe I'll get convinced.
And I would say, I imagine this is something that we could grow into over time. I mean, I like the idea that over time, I've heard our teachers talk a lot about the portfolio systems that they use, the body of evidence that they gather to show that students have attained a more well-rounded skill set as opposed to just the stuff that's traditionally assessed in more standardized assessments. And I'm curious about what it would look like to align a survey or something to that body of evidence at the elementary grades to the academic and career planning process, potentially at the middle or high school level, right? Like, it's not just the survey, but it's aligned to a, of, yeah, a body of evidence that students with support from their teachers collect that represent all that they're learning in school. So I just, I feel like there's something to explore here, and we, no one seems to have gotten it figured, figured out.
Is this, Mary, are you there?
Yeah, I, um.
Do you want to, do you want to weigh in?
We must be having some vibes going back, because it was just at the point I wanted to jump in.
Oh.
We've been working together too long.
So I concede the value of the percentage of students on track to achieve the graduate vision using a self-reported survey. I don't have anything obviously against it without seeing some tests of how that might, what it would show is hard to determine how valuable and how much it represents how well our students are doing and how well we're helping them to compare to be college, career, and community ready. My comment is more about removing the grade nine course failures and the grade eleven three P, three-point-oh GPA, because I think there is a huge body of evidence that says that these are important to gauge in whether students are prepared or at least able when they reach that graduation to go to a two or a four-year college. And the grade nine has value in, because the research shows that it's a strong predictor of whether students will graduate on time, graduate at all, much less college, career, and community ready. And then I think the three-point-oh is a strong indicator of being prepared to go on to post-secondary education. So I think both of those are incredibly valuable, and I would be very concerned about dropping those and relying on a self-reported survey around a graduate vision.
Yeah, and Mary, just to respond to that, this is Jen. I think that the team who crafted this, their thinking was that it would be the combination of the ACT Aspire that would essentially replace the academic on-track status. But nevertheless, I know that there are a bunch of us that are concerned about losing ninth grade on-track in GPA from the system because of their evidence base. So I, I totally get your feedback. I appreciate it.
I don't think that actually the ACT and the Aspire are good substitutes for GPA and, and course failure or on-time to graduate type of measures, because we know that there's issues with standardized tests, huge issues.
Yeah.
And, and yet GPA is, is a reflection of inability of a student to work and to achieve basically focus on what's needed to be successful academically. I'm not saying that that's the only measure, and it's not that we don't have talented and smart students who are well below a three-point-oh. But we also know that it's going to be very difficult to persist in post, post-secondary, even two-year or four-year, if you're much below a three, a three-point-oh. So, and yet standardized tests, I don't, I actually, I mean, I, I wouldn't mind, I'd much rather see a GPA and an on-time to graduate or course failures if, if I had to choose with, between them. But I'm not sure that we need to choose. High school is a big deal, and I don't think that we should necessarily narrow it down without having a really good reason for it.
Mm-hmm.
Laura?
I just would definitely want to second that. That was something that I wanted to bring up, too. Just because I think that the concerns about standardized testing are valid, especially with the Aspire, because, well, one, I know that the Aspire is packaged with the ACT in terms of that they're sold by the same company.
Yep.
But it's like barely the same type of questions at all. And so it's much, it just confuses me that that is what the company considers as like the preparatory test in earlier levels for the ACT. Also, I, I think that there is a concern about the Aspire test being taken seriously in terms of, I feel like grades have a more tangible impact on a student's life, and they're more visible to us, whereas Aspire is, is perceived as something that doesn't really impact their school career and just, you know, exists on this level. And also, I don't know, talking with my West new principal, Dr. Bran, she also would second the fact that it's GPA and, in ninth grade.
On track, yeah.
And that will determine not just high school graduation, but also college completion as well, so.
Do we need to, I mean, do we need the Aspire? What was the, what was the thinking?
State.
It's state man.
We just take it anyway, you know? So, but it, it gets, it gets, I think we're actually reverting back to exactly this system that we have now, which is okay. Yeah.
I, I, I do think that, you know, that perhaps tweaking, you know, saying, do we want to do core, do we want to do core course failures? Do we want to do Ds and Fs and things like that?
Yes.
But I do think that some grade-based and, and some local-based thing is, is, is very much warranted. And thank you, Mary. We were gonna, I was going to get there later, but thank you for getting there now. And additionally, one thing with the Aspire, I want to note that it appears that both the mathematics and science section will include items that are, that have not been in students' curriculum yet. The ninth grade version has things that students won't be exposed to until tenth or eleventh grade, which is really kind of a silly thing to do. And, you know, this, this is from my son's friends. They were like, there was a bunch on there that I've never seen before. And they're totally on track. I mean, you know, they're not advanced kids, but they're on-track kids.
You can also just like type some things. Oh, yeah, you can also just type some things in for the writing or reading sections, and then just press enter to get it to go forward. I know that when I took it in tenth grade, some of my friends had another, they were trying to study for their AP test, and so they just clicked through it all and then just studied because their parents didn't sign it up, so.
So.
Yeah.
They just went through. Nice, good to know. Which, which actually brings up another issue, which is that the forward essay sections are, are computer graded, machine AI graded, which is something that I have deep concerns about. And whereas MAP doesn't have an essay section, so.
Yeah. And this goes back to James's earlier point about state being dependent on the state system as opposed to what matters and we value most, so, okay.
Okay. Goal number two, the district's in every school, and it's, in it is a place where children, staff, and families thrive. The concept of power questions first, and then I guess secondarily, what's that? Secondarily, are there particular suggestions or critiques of the ones that have been chosen? How's that for a, a way to move forward? I, I like the concept of power questions, or, you know, if not, a single one, maybe picking two or three and doing, combining them. I think that the current is unwieldy and doesn't work, but I do, I like the idea of power questions. I do have concerns about the parent climate question, especially with the disaggregated data, that the response rates in some schools from some demographics are very small. James?
I think maybe you just said this, but I think power questions are good in some cases. For example, the staff climate question, I enjoy going to work, I can see that one being effective and working well, you're talking to staff. But the parent climbing power question, I am welcome at school, that's a little more problematic, because we know we've had some difficulties with, with our surveys in terms of demographic, demographic representation. So that one's a little problematic. So I think power questions can be good, but it depends on, on the, I think, on the group.
Anna?
Um, I'm, no, why I'm not turning off my mic? I, I thought about the student climate power question. I had shared this before. I know it's, I feel I belong at this school, although I think as a district, we should stretch ourselves and say, I feel I am valued at this school, or belong and valued. I think that's an important piece. And I'm also wondering if there should be a question around, I feel safe at school.
Dean? Yeah, and I know this, this is kind of, if you're looking for boxes to check, you can come up with these kinds of questions, but I think there should also be an opportunity for, to, for whoever's taking the survey to provide a narrative. And it's harder to measure. But for a student, I feel I belong at this school, but I would like to see, or I, but this, that, you know, there's always something that is valuable to hear, and I think you should, we have, have to apply for an opportunity of that. A parent, I was, I feel, I'm welcome at this school, but this happened, and when it happens again, I'm going to knock them out, or something like that. You know, they're going to say that. We don't, you know, we've had parents feel that. That, that's wrong. So we need to know that. And if you apply, you account for a narrative to come with it, I think that does, yeah, it's, it'd take longer to, to read through and categorize, but I think it should be there.
Yeah, and I will mention that our current climate survey does have open-ended questions that ask students, parents, and staff to comment on the school's greatest strengths and challenges right now, but, you know.
I, I guess regardless of what questions in particular, and then I do have to make some kind of common sense, I'd like to see questions that have great variability either among schools or change over time, or, or, you know, where the, where the, where the standard deviations are kind of big, because that, that means that this is a place where there's, you know, work to be done. Right? I mean, that, 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 if, if, you know, if everybody, if everybody, if every school and every demographic group is at sixty percent, you know, sure, we want to get to seventy, but ones where there's some kind of variety, I, I think that, that, that would be something to look for. If it makes common sense, it's got to make common sense, it's got to have a narrative, it's got to tell a story, you know, feeling welcome, enjoying go-to-work, being trusted. I mean, these are the kind of things that, that are key, but, you know, kind of zero, try to zero in on ones that, where there's movement.
Yeah.
Okay. Attendance. I like including it.
Me too.
Laura?
I just had an idea about this, just as, something that one of the speakers brought up in my mind, is that it seems as though, because attendance is sort of, it's outside of the realm, it's, it's partially due to things outside of the realm of school, but it has a really big impact on school performance. And it almost seems like the school is not really responsible, it, it can't be really held accountable for teaching the kids that don't show up, because that's not really a failing of the curriculum if you can't reach the students at all. So I'm wondering if there has ever been an, an attempt to disaggregate data by chronic absenteeism, because if you did pull that out and you saw much larger jumps in performance, that would be a huge indicator that the interventions in the classroom that we're doing are actually working. It's just the problem then is getting the kids into the building to also experience those, so.
I think we've seen huge correlations, and I think that, between, between the two. And we've had a couple of years of some kind of concerted efforts. There were some, there was some United Way grants that were done, and pretty limited success, but that doesn't mean we should stop trying. I mean, I mean, to get the kids in the buildings and in the classrooms on a regular basis. I, I mean, I think that, and this is one where sometimes I'm skeptical of all the talk of relationships, but this is a place where I'm not. I'm not. That, that's strong, you know, that, that when students have strong relationships, you'll find, they'll find ways to get to school, and the schools will find ways to get the kids there. And, and I think that that is, is really important.
TK, could I jump in?
You certainly may, Mary.
Okay. So I'll just, it seems like we're going through goal number two, is that?
Yeah.
I'm surprised we are going to use power metrics overall, and then the specific questions, but it sounds from the comments that they're actually melding together. Is that correct?
More or less.
Okay. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not against the power metrics. I certainly love that they're being included, not just that we put them in the climate survey and, and don't have a higher level of focus on it. So I'm a huge proponent of that. I'm not sure that I think that these questions really get at the crux of whether students are succeeding in our schools or not. I'm not sure I feel I belong is strong enough about being valued, I feel I, I mean, things that are a little bit higher bar than, than maybe belong. So that's one. I, I concur with James on. Uh, so that's one, I, I concur with James on some questions about whether the parent, when I'm welcome at the school, I think parents can be, feel welcome without them feeling that their student uh is receiving the support that they need. Uh, so I just, I, certainly I know that I think, uh, we, we have to really think through how aligned the question is. If in fact it is a power question, I would say it could be a power question. It is the, it was the, it is the question for students, for staff, for parents in each one of those questions that actually is the power in driving uh us towards our mission, so. And then with regards to attendance, um, ninety percent strikes me as a really low bar. I mean, to think, that means you miss it one day, a student misses a day every two weeks. Uh, and so I, I want to understand why ninety percent shows us. My, my guess is that students who are below ninety percent are doing very poorly in our school. And so does it really tell us anything uh that we don't already know? And is it setting, is it basically sending a message that we set the bar really low? Those are my comments, the number, I'm goal number two.
Uh, Dean?
No, I.
Oh, okay, just, just one more. Bo, comments on, Bo or Jen?
Um, yeah, no, I, I think, I think the idea of, you know, ninety percent attendance is, is an interesting one to think about. Um, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but we have explored that a little bit, and using ninety percent as a cutoff, um, you know, there's, there's actually probably more students that don't have ninety percent attendance rates than we would all think right now, and uh we have schools whose average attendance rate is below ninety percent right now. So um I understand, you know, concerns about what that bar looks like, um, but when we do use a ninety percent cutoff, we do see a lot of students not hitting it and a lot of variation among student groups um on that as well.
Overall, the district's like ninety-three, something like that?
Yeah.
About, yeah, I mean, that's kind of, yeah, about ninety-three.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, goal number three, we will accelerate progress for African-American children and youth, Dean?
I don't know if I agree that no additional metrics are required here. Um, the uh, you, we all know the achievement gap is a nightmare for everybody, and we do measure things, but we're trying to particularly prioritize our students of color that aren't making it, along with all the other kids that aren't making it too, which I, I agree. Uh, our friend Marcia was telling us that of the uh tw- uh, of the twenty-three to the twenty-four students she works with that did not have IEPs in high school, uh, we're all kids of color, probably a whole lot of those are African-American. So, um, I'm not so certain I agree with no, no specific meas- uh, metric should be not used to stop the wacko-mole that she described and to, to say, okay, we know there they are, we know where they're all, we know what schools they're all in, and then let's, uh, we have to somehow determine that, and you can probably figure it out school by school uh by the, the testing that we, we do, and also who gets assigned to the reading specialist. But at the same time, uh, we've been doing that for a long time, and we're not seeing a whole lot of, lot of change, just a little bit here, a little bit here, a success here, a success there. So maybe we should rethink that, and maybe there are some metrics that we can use that could help us uh inform what we're doing. And so it's great to say that we're gonna create a goal here, but then, well, how are we gonna meet that goal without anything different than we've already been doing?
Right, so Dean, I just wanna make sure I understand what you're saying. So you're, you're saying that the metrics that we inevitably use for everybody wouldn't be sufficient for this goal?
Yeah, there should be additional.
Additional metrics.
Yeah, there should be some special ones that maybe we don't even quite.
Yeah.
Get how to determine yet.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
It would, it would, I would think that we'd have to individualize this a lot, because whatever we determine, it, it also, it's uh could be different with why uh this student isn't succeeding as opposed to this one. There's a lot of different things going on with someone who's been struggling their entire career uh in our school, being here all since kindergarten or four K to high school and still reading at second-grade level. There's a whole lot of stuff that needs to get unpacked to determine, why did that one, why did we, why did it get this far?
Yeah.
So with this one, so there's different things that have to happen here, and I don't, I can't think of a test to do that other than digging down one by one early on and catching it quicker and addressing it faster. So I, so what metric that is, I don't think there's a standard test for that.
Yeah.
I think there has to be something different.
And I think to your point, if we set this explicit goal with maybe some additional metrics that really get at some of the key issues, it means we have to have an explicit strategy.
Yeah.
For meeting the needs of African-American, yeah.
That, that, this, these, we have to go after every single kid that got that far and, and reading that number at, at a grade level that doesn't have an IEP, there's no learning disability, there's a whole lot of other stuff it, it, that involves all the other things that we do, the social mo, the, the, the mental health care, the, the, if there's problem home, if they're not eating, if they're homeless, we've gotta figure it all out for each one and, and address it as soon as we can and stay consistent with it.
James, did you?
Yeah, on that, on that point, um, in terms of uh strategy development around this goal, do we have as part of our strategic community input sessions or what have you, do we have anything specific to this? Because I'd be really interested to know what our staff, people who work directly with the kids, what they would suggest as a strategy for uh, uh, you know, rectifying s- some of the issues that Dean is talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Do we have as part of our um, uh, community sessions or staff sessions, do we have anything structured uh to get at this uh, uh, metric?
Well, the community in, all of the sessions are uh mainly focused on how to accelerate performance for students who've been underperforming. I mean, it's a, it's about that kind of transformational change. And in the uh discussion that we have, the short presentation I do, we always show the data of kind of where African-American students are, Latino students, white students, and the average. So that is part of the framing, and then we ask, where do we need to double down, where do we need to make bold moves? How do we support you, depending on who it is that we're talking about? So I think we do get at it, very much so, um, and we have particular groups uh that are experiencing the problem. So we're meeting with African-American youth, we're meeting with African-American parents, we're meeting with um African-American leaders uh from our community, so it's helping.
So we do have a structure in place where we should be able to develop some additional metrics here
Yeah.
that should be really meaningful and get at, at the issues that Dean was talking about.
I think so, I mean, I, I, I think we've got to, mm-hmm.
Anna?
I was just, I know later, uh, around af- the afternoon today, um, John Odom did send um a nice report from MAGA. I don't know what it exactly stands for, I have to go back and look at it.
Yeah.
Um, but I think that would be a good place to go back and look at what, what we are saying as a district, our, our interventions or strategies that we're using to close the white-black achievement gap, that that's what this is about specifically.
Yeah.
I'm just reading over it now, and it's, it's interesting to me, um, some of the things I wouldn't identify as being used in that way, and I, and one thing I do pick out is a lot of it focuses on coherent instruction, but it doesn't talk more about um specific targeted strategies.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So sorry, that was.
No.
Yeah, our, our strategic framework was focused on coherence, just putting it out there in those first five years. Yeah, we're at a different place.
At this time, I'm a little agn- agnostic on this. Um, I wanna focus on the students who we're failing with, and clearly that's, that includes a significant percentage of African-American students, but I'd have to see the strategies and metrics that were focused on that before being like fully on board. And um, the, in the same way, I'd have to be, I'd have to see strategies and, and, and met, well, the metrics would be easy, the students we're failing with. Um, but I'd like to see the strategies around, around that, if, 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 if that were something different. Um, and Dr. Odom just walked in, and you were just mentioned. Uh, just wanted to acknowledge that. So it's, it, it's, I wanna see what was fleshed out, I, I guess, is, 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 because right now it's a concept. And um, I, I'm, yeah, that, that's kind of where I'm at on it.
Jen, can you remind us, you mentioned, you threw a couple of ideas out at the beginning, and maybe just around, yeah.
Metrics, not strategies, metrics. Um, I was making them up off the top of my head, but uh, just to demonstrate the point, but um, uh, I had said, I think, uh, School readiness, I think, you wrote them down.
Yeah, it was kindergarten readiness, ninth grade on track, advanced coursework or uh support access, and then also being in honor-saving classes.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So some ways to get it, not just the achievement outcome, but access um as well, which is a, a big challenge.
Hmm.
Where are the advanced coursework since I've seen it once before, I haven't been finding it.
It's not there, it's, it's one of the things that was removed.
It was part of goal number two.
Which is where we're going to go next, I think.
I mean, yeah, which is why I would offer it up as a.
Yeah.
Metric for this particular goal.
Absolutely. I mean, overall, I just, I think, I think the structure of the goals is quite well-aligned with the value statements that we laid out earlier, right? We laid out a couple of months ago, excellence, belonging, social justice, voice, focus, and creativity essentially, and these tie almost one-to-one to belonging, excellence, and um social justice and voice, kind of, right? I think there, there's an element there that tie really well. Um, I think the, the creativity is, is not quite, quite as visible. Um, and then the focus element, I mean, I think maybe we'll come back to at the end, just the overall number here, right? We're, we've got fourteen metrics on the page, we've added a couple, maybe if, if we go add our GPA back in, which I think we should. Um, uh, every time I see us talk as a district about um this, we're talking about generally two metrics, right? We don't go through fourteen metrics, which is, I think, Bo, what you started with in your push towards um simplicity, right? Um, because we can't hold fourteen or fifteen or tw- if we add growth back in at each level, twenty-five metrics in our head and actually action all of them. And so I just, you know, maybe at the end, we can come back to that question around focus, right? What is it that we're really focused on? Um, and is there a way to, I think we need to have something that's highly aligned to advanced learners and making sure that we're delivering on our promise to advanced learners, same thing with students with disabilities. And so is the right way to do that via this, or is there a separate, you know, is there one metric that we use for that instead of adding kind of growth back in on each one, right? I don't know, it's, we, we generally talk about grades three through five MAP and grades six through eight MAP. Those are the things we talk about most as a district.
I think we might start talking about some of the other things that, that are here, the attendance. I think we've, we, we do talk about BEP things and climate stuff, which the BEP's not here at the moment. Um, I think that, do we wanna close up this conversation about, is there, there final thoughts on the particular African-American focused metric that, that people wanna share before we move on to the um, the, the slide eleven and then the kind of what's missing conversation?
I'll just echo what I said before, I think it's, it's important that uh. Now we get the right input on this one, and whether it's community input or staff input or what have you, I think it's important uh that we develop some type of metrics here that uh, um, that we develop some metrics, because right now we don't have any.
Yeah.
And uh, but I, again, I'm really interested to know what, what our staff thinks about, about this one.
Yeah.
And, and get the input there, and uh, and what, what the community, um, some of our community groups, what they think about this one.
From side eleven, there's two things that have been mentioned that I'd like to highlight. One is, oh, did you have? What's that? Oh, side eleven, yeah. Um, one is the well-rounded, which Kate just uh mentioned in some, in some form, and the other was also mentioned was that um some form of a growth, some form of a change, some form of a movement metric. And I think both, I think that the inclusion of um, let me speak to the first one, on the well-rounded and the advanced learner. I think that what we've been doing now hasn't been very good, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't try to do something better. That, and particularly, you know, access to the arts, that, you know, that, that K-five, it's, it's relatively meaning, actually, K-eight, it's relatively meaningless, but I do think that there's great variation in our middle schools about how much time students have access to the arts and access to world languages and access to advanced coursework, and the metric we're using now doesn't capture that variation. And, and so I think that, you know, it's kind of a, we have a yes or no question, almost. Um, and so I think that I'd like to see, particularly for the secondary, the eight, the, 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 the middle and high schools, I'd like to see versions of that metric, um, you know, different ways to calculate the different ideas, and, and maybe we can come up with something that, that is workable and better and is simple and can be understood and isn't too burdensome to, to, to track. Um, I mean, that's part of who we wanna be, is that students have access to these things. And so that's, that's my opinion on that, on the growth, I just think we need, I like student growth percentiles, I could live with some Vamps, with, with some, some value-added stuff. Um, I wanna see, I, I don't like the current MAP growth use, but, but I wanna see something. I wanna see some, I wanna see, I wanna see something on growth. That's my four cents. Yeah, I mean, we've touched on a lot of it, but those are, those are two that I wanted to pull out that we haven't had.
I mean, just on the growth question, what is, um, I mean, I think about growth can be used, as you talked about it, kind of the top quartile and bottom quartile in terms of achievement. Um, I mean, what is the best way for us to know we've succeeded with students who are not yet at basic literacy, say, right? Like, what's the best way for us to know that? I don't know, I, it doesn't, I'm not sure it's growth, like, and I, it's a genuine question to the group. What, what would be the single way that you would feel like we had succeeded with students who had not yet achieved basic literacy?
Or is there a single way?
Is there, it's a fair question, I don't know, I mean, it's just.
Maybe you need multiple measures, uh, you know, or is there a single, single way? I mean, I, I appreciate the point about, you know, success and how to, you know, how, what can we, you know, how do you measure it? And how, when, when do we know we've been successful? And so I can appreciate that, I wonder though if there is a singular measure of that.
Yeah, I don't know.
Other than knowing how many kids are accepted into Harvard, for example. Uh, I don't know if there's a single method of measure.
Anna, where are you?
I, I think one thing that you, you need to start doing with is really looking at the data and presenting it and putting it out there. I think that's an important thing and not kind of bear, bearing it under other stuff. And, and then when you're really looking at it and making it a priority, I mean, I, I'm on the same page as TJ on this. My primary focus is to focus on the kids that have not been successful in our school district, however, however you wanna identify them or label them. I think we have a large group of students that are not being successful, and as a district, we need to take ownership of that situation and focus on that group, and, and then we can talk about excellence. But for some of our kids, as TJ has said before, we don't even have adequacy. So I, I, that is a priority for me as well. I, I heard I was in this conversation about the proficiency ban, so I'm not exactly sure if I'm hearing anything new.
No, I'm not sure, I mean, maybe the, I just keep, it, it, it's, it's hard for me to see how we're gonna use the number of metrics that we have right now and use them differently. Like, I think, that's what I'm hearing from this dialogue, is let's add back growth, which is great, and I, I mean, I completely appreciate it. I'm not sure, um, when I think about the challenges we have with advanced learners, I think we have maybe three primary opportunities. One is around identification, we've tried something different there, and we can measure that around who has access, right? Two is around actual instruction, showing up to school every day and being challenged. I don't think that growth represents that. Um, and three is around our racial demographics of who has access to advanced learning, and I think we can capture that in goal three. So I don't, I'm not sure growth actually captures. So I don't, I'm not sure growth actually captures something that demonstrates success with advanced learners. And so the question was on the same flip side on the bottom and is, what's the metric that's the right?
I think versions of growth can capture things with advanced learners in earlier grades, but there is a top-out plateau effect that's, that's going to happen and that the standardized tests aren't going to, aren't going to be measuring significant growth. But, you know, something like MAP, MAP where you have the RIT scores, or if you have Lexis out scores and things like that, that there is a wide range. And so you can have a second grader who is, who is growing from fifth to sixth to seventh grade levels. And that will be captured in, in, in MAP. But once you get to seventh or eighth level, there, yeah, it's going to stop. It's going, I mean, I think there's no question about that. So there's some limits, there's limits on everything. Dean?
Yeah, I, to Anna's point, working with the kids that are struggling is, is complex. And I do not think that there is some type of, of assessment that will get at every single kid. I have no doubt that the, the students that Marcia was talking about weren't intervened on in elementary or middle school and up to high school now. I have no doubt. So our, our strategy with working with, with those particular kids did not work. We followed what we thought we should do. We get them a reading interventionist and a reading specialist. It didn't work. And it didn't work, it doesn't work too many times now. So with, those are what you would do with someone that, that just scored low without reviewing why that's going on. So it's got to be a deeper review. And that is why it has to be, that's why it's so complex. And why it has to be much more individualized with that kid immediately. We have to determine not just, well, there might be a, a, a better reading instruction practice. It could be something else. And, and ever since, well, for this whole year of, of things I've been thinking about, sometimes we just got to slow down and listen to kids a little bit more, find out more and more and more about why they're not succeeding and maybe slow it down with them. And, and slow curriculum down, slow instruction down with this particular kid and do it different. So, 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 and come to the point where we begin to see where that kid starts to make some change. Because too many times, following the same assessment, here's the strategy, it should work and it works with a lot of them, but it won't work with so many of them now. Then we know that additionally with, with the achievement gap results, we know that it's not working with a whole lot of, of the African-American kids, but other kids as well. So we're just not doing all the stuff that's necessary. We're doing a lot of good stuff and we're trying like, like hell all the way through. I know that Marcia's up there working her butt off every day. And I'm, no doubt that every other reading interventionist is not doing the same thing. No doubt, I have no doubt, but we need to add more to it. And how do we assess it, I do not know. Other than slow it down, let's get some more interviews going on. Let's track it all the way through to find out where the heart of the problem is. And then that's, that's where you go. It might not even be reading or his ability to read. It might be something else. Get that done and all of a sudden things start to take off. It's, it's complex. I understand it, but we can do this. I'm positive.
Jen?
I am cognizant that we're two hours into this conversation. I think that I've got my marching orders on this particular issue. We certainly could talk about it more, but I, Bo, do you have additional questions specifically about the idea of measuring growth? That proficiency and above is not sufficient to drive strategy?
No, I mean, I think growth in general is, is just something that we, that we do have to think a little bit more about. I mean, we know, we have heard dissatisfaction with the MAP growth measure as we have been using it. You know, things like student growth percentiles can work, but we'd be calculating those to basically be self, self-referencing. So we'd really only be using them to separate out, you know, student groups or schools and kind of look at performance that way. You know, value-added models, I, I don't know that we would necessarily want to head into the direction of doing a district-level value-added model. You know, maybe things like, you know, we get percentiles associated with tests. Maybe it's, you know, looking at students improving their percentiles from year to year.
Yeah.
I don't know yet.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the effort that, that I can tell you're going to make. I think that you, we do need to wrap up this part because we also have Cindy to talk about middle school stuff real quick. But there, but there, I do think that I'd like an opportunity, and I've got two big things actually, and I'd like to hear from other board members about things that we may want to include that are, that aren't here in addition to things that were taken out. And I understand that we do want to limit these, but some things are very important. And there's, the one is, when I have mixed feelings about, and so I'm not sure if I want to include it or not, but I do think it needs to be on the table, which is some measure around behavior education plan and, and related things. And, and I don't know if we want that, but I want to throw that out there. And then the second thing is that, well, this kind of hit me this morning over coffee. And I was thinking about, we are looking at students, we're looking at overall kind of percentages and numbers and, and things like that. But as a district and as a board, one of the things that, that I think we have a responsibility for is not what is the mean or the median or the average and what, what is the percentages doing this? But we have a responsibility that, for minimizing variation among our schools that we don't have, that we don't achieve a sixty percent proficiency rate by having one school at thirty and one school at ninety. And that some measures of variability in, 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 in at least the achievement and perhaps the other ones, that if we have, you know, we're not doing our job as a board of education if we have good schools and bad schools. I mean, we're not. And I think that we need to have some measure as a, as a strategy at the district level to find, you know, the old equity task force work set is that, 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 that our district will, will, will achieve equity when all, when all schools are equally desirable or equally something. But, but the point is not exactly the same, but that there is qual, but there are quality and qualities that are, that are, that are universal. And so, you know, some, whether it's, you know, the distribution of things, the, the, the size of the standard deviations, I don't know what it looks like, Bo, you're much, you know much more about this, but, but some kind of measures of that, I really think we have to do with at least achievement and perhaps the other ones. So those are my two things that are missing. Anyone else, anything else that's missing or any comments on those?
My three.
Kate's got three.
I had three thinking through, and so these most really are output metrics. I'm not sure we should include anything that we have a little bit more control over. One was around facilities, in terms of just thinking through what our community perceives as our schools and facilities caliber. One was around our workforce and how we want to think through. We know that we have some challenges around supply of highly qualified educators. And so from a long-term perspective, that's something that I'm, want to make sure we have our eye on the ball on. And, uh, the last one was around readiness, which really isn't something we have control over. But again, it was kind of an input and just was, was for that early childhood education piece, so.
Do we have a challenge in terms of qualified educators? I mean, I'm not saying we don't, or, or is it certain professions within the educational background?
Yeah, it goes back to the conversation we had with Deirdre just recently about hard to staff positions, special ed, bilingual, and the diversity of our staff.
Yeah, those three things. And, and every year fewer teachers are trained. And we don't have fewer kids, so.
Are we ready to wrap this up? Well then, thank you. Only two hours on the, on the hot seat.
Well, let's talk about next steps for a quick second, please.
Yeah, and we'll go through this very quickly. But, so just reemphasize, you know, we're not done. This is a process. What you're seeing is our current thinking, but we're not done. So we have more work to do this year. So our next steps include collecting more teacher and staff feedback. We worked with some groups already, but we know that's, that's an area where we need to go next now that we have, you know, kind of, kind of some more to react to. Obviously, just continuing to pressure test the current ideas too. We'll use the feedback we've received tonight, feedback we receive overall, just explore some different directions. And then ideally, you know, we're working towards finalization of goals and metrics in, in February of 2018 and then implementation of the system, starting in the 2018-19 school year as we move forward with the next five-year framework.
And that February date, just to remember, is important because school improvement plans get launched in the spring and, you know, the accountability system needs to align with school-level accountability.
What happens before February, if we want to finalize in February? So December is going to be gone before we know it.
Yeah.
And so we're talking about January. So what happens? Is it one meeting? I mean, how do we finalize? I'd see it's marching towards this February date.
Yeah, we are.
But.
In terms of your discussion?
Is it, do we have to approve something?
That's a good question. We weren't imagining that you would approve outside of the final approval of the framework.
Okay, so if we have to approve the final framework, so, you know, once we get there, I guess I'm concerned, we, we look like we're going to have January, because December is going to be gone before we know it, right? So, because we're not going to touch on this anymore to win.
Once the next time it's on the calendar.
The retreat is in February.
Yeah, but this is back on before the retreat, at the February operations work group. So we're going to go back to the drawing board, do some more work on it, we'll bring it back to you in February. I mean, yeah, I mean, if, you're right, there isn't much time. We're going to be working triple time to bring it back to you, James. And are you concerned that the board isn't having another shot at, in, kind of messing with it before we?
I just want to make sure when, when February comes, when we get ready to finalize it, that the board is sitting there saying, yeah, we've had enough input, we've gone through it enough and we're in a good place.
It's always a risk.
For me, sometimes the board feels as though we get to these places and we have not had enough time to really get it and go over the discussions. And so I just want to make sure that once we're in February and we're at that point, that the board feels like we've.
Agreed. I, I agree. I mean, I think that for us to turn it back around, we couldn't bring it back to you sooner than February. I think that would really be pushing it. If we really want to get real teacher input, we need to think about the implications for the actual assessment system, which is different from the accountability system. I would love to be able to talk about it with board officers, just to think through that question a little bit more, unless there's other feedback you have on it now.
If I understand this, the February deadline is related to the SIPs.
Yeah.
The SIP process. And, and I.
Which gets launched in April.
And if, if need be, we could have this be a transitional year with SIPs and that the finalization, that, that, that the full alignment between the strategic framework metrics and the SIP metrics might not happen, this, might not happen this year. I mean, that's, that's a possibility. And I guess that, you know, that, that there's worse things that, I'd rather get the strategic framework metrics, right?
Yeah, that seems like, I mean, that's, that.
They don't fully align now, so.
Why don't, given that we have two board members also, I know Mary is here in, in, sort of here.
Abstancia.
Yeah, in abstancia, but given that we also are missing someone tonight, let's, maybe we can come back with a proposal around how to do that.
Definitely, we'll take the feedback. Right now, we were, based on your board calendar, you've got it back on for February operations. Would love to talk to you guys about whether or not you think that's efficient. You know, we could always tack it on to January, I suppose. I just don't know that we would have our work done. And given the break and everything, I want to make sure that it's realistic for staff. Like, we, we can bring something back to you that is of quality. Yeah, so I'll put that there. And to TJ's point, I mean, you are the board of education. And, but I just want you to understand that typically SIPs launch in April. So pushing it too much further back than February, I mean, we certainly could, it, it just starts to get a little tricky. And, but, you know, I think we should still strive for that.
I, I guess just one year of not totally aligned SIPs, to me, is, is a small price to pay for a better, for a better set of, of, of metrics for a five-year strategic plan.
Yeah.
If that's, if it comes to that, if it comes to that, which it might not.
My last comment on this is that you, the feedback was excellent tonight. We had a great discussion and I'm thrilled that the three goal categories are ones that the board seems to embrace. We're really talking more about the metrics within those categories. And I think we've got some work to do, but I don't think we're starting over either. Yeah, I mean, I think we're pretty close, so I'm certainly not in a panic. Or how are you feeling?
More, more work to do, more things to look at.
Yeah, right.
But we'll, we'll get to a good place.
I mean, we're reverting back to some of our metrics that we, you know, thought were critical in the first phase. I think we're making improvements upon them, but we're not starting over. I think we can do this.
I think the three goals are fantastic.
I really like where we're landing. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Bo.
And the, the other item on the agenda, Cindy's been waiting, waiting patiently, is an update. You want to take a break?
Two minutes? Five minutes? You need to.
We will recess for three minutes. Three minutes.
I was asking for Laura, who asked like ten minutes ago to take a break. Laura?
I'm ready.
Just got to wait.
Um, hey TJ, can I make that correction for everyone?
Most certainly, most certainly. All right, we are back. And the superintendent would like to correct where the goals and metrics are going next.
Yeah, Kelly texted me during the meeting, actually, to remind me, it's not operations. It is the Instruction Work Group in February that that's slated for, so the first week of February.
Okay, and then additionally at the February retreat, if need be. So, two shots in February. Sounds good. The final item on the agenda tonight, other than adjournment, is an update on the Adolescent Learner... I'm channeling Mary. The Adolescent Learner/Middle School Redesign Project. And Cindy and Lisa are here. I don't know how you have planned to present or discuss this, but I'm sure you do.
Cindy, I think you should go ahead and just dive right in. Yeah?
I assume everyone wants to dive in, so you can go home, back to the goal. Um, no. Hi, everyone. I am excited to be here, even after a really, really good discussion, to kind of just give you a status update of where we are around the Adolescent Learner Project. Or as TJ alluded to, really thinking about our middle schools and our middle school learners. So we have reconvened a cross-functional team. Last year, as you know, we had a team that came together. And they really spent the year kind of learning and hearing from people around what people wanted to see in our middle schools and what people wanted for our adolescents. From that, we had a set of six recommendations that we brought to you back in May or June that talked about where we wanted to go with our adolescent learners around overall recommendations, curriculum and instruction, structure, school culture, and system. So those were kind of the big areas. What we have done this year is we took those kind of six large recommendations and really started to think about what was essential or foundational to see in all of our middle schools before we did... Oh, it wouldn't go. Thanks, sorry. All right. It's because it's my bedtime almost, and I didn't see the green light. So we, we took those six large, kind of buckets of work, of those recommendations, and started to begin to have conversations with the cross-functional team of what we thought was foundational or essential, like where do we begin with all of this information? And what do we think is critical for our middle schools to begin doing now versus what do we potentially want to see long-term? And, and those three areas are around this idea of small learning communities, thinking about what our adolescents need in terms of the learning style, in terms of close-knit relationships, and having a small group of teachers wrap their arms around them. This idea of master scheduling, and master scheduling is like, everything hinges on a master schedule. And for years, we've heard about many pain points at our middle school. It came up in some of these conversations you had earlier around thinking about how do we look at our master schedules and restructure master scheduling so that it meets the needs of our learners? And then this third area, we've already started to do some work around, which is professional development. But professional development around continuing with the culturally and linguistically responsive practices, but also around adolescent and adolescent development. We started that with our literacy teachers at middle school, but we really want to make sure that that spans to every staff member in our middle schools so that people are really understanding adolescents and what happens to the adolescent brain and, and what that means for teaching adolescents. Because it is definitely a different group of kids than you have in elementary and even a different group than in high school. And so we wanted to make sure as middle school is kind of this somewhat of a black hole across our nation around best things to do. We know one thing is critical, is understanding the adolescent development and doing some in-depth training with that. The last thing I would say about that is through the cross-functional team, everyone said loud and clear this idea of integration. So wanting to make sure any professional development we did around the adolescent development was integrated into content with instruction tied to our culturally and linguistically responsive practices. So it wasn't in a siloed effect. The other thing I would say is what is on here may seem like only three bullets and out of that larger set of recommendations that you received. But we also know how important it is to take the initial right steps and small steps instead of trying to go too wide based on what schools can manage and handle at one time. And so master scheduling, one last thing I'll say, and then I'll just open it up for you all to ask questions. So for master scheduling, as you know, we start these consultations with all of our 12 middle schools, actually beginning next week. And we kind of have a phased approach of what we want to see happen. The first thing is we want to make sure that our schools are focusing on access for all students in the areas of world language, in arts, our challenging coursework, and also trying to detangle that from interventions. Right now, in many of our schools, it's an "or" opportunity for students versus an "and." If I'm in an intervention, I have to take that instead of world language. Or if I'm in Avid, I have to take that instead of something else. So we want to work around our master schedules to make sure that kids have the, a choice and opportunities to be able to take both and not have to choose between one or the other. And the other thing I would say is with world language, for years, we've been talking about how we need to kind of stabilize or build coherence around world language across our 12 middle schools. And we haven't gotten there yet. Our middle schools currently are set up where some have instruction to build where kids can enter into a Level 2 in high school and others don't. So when we think about the access for world language, we want to ensure that we're also providing some consistency across our middle schools so that all students are able to enter into the high school at the same space. So I'm just going to pause there. That's a little bit of the memo. We have some next steps. We come back to you in March, really excited with a larger plan, budget, all the good stuff to kind of tell you more of where we're going. But this is just a high-level overview, so I'll pause for questions.
Thank you. I just want to say that, a couple of quick comments to get started. One is that I appreciate that you're going relatively slow. And that, you know, that, that we're not pushing radical change, that, that these are kind of, there's some structural things that you're talking about this year in addition to the, to the professional development. And I think that that's, I think that's, that's good. And I understand that come later, we'll see something that probably does push a little faster and a little, a little stronger. But I, but I think that, you know, that kind of taking this one or two steps at a time is important. Have some concerns that I just want to make sure are monitored around how the smaller learning communities deal with segregation and clustering issues. And what that's going to look like in our schools, that if you cluster, if you, you know, if, if, with the differentiation we have in, in the math curriculum for many sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, with the, you know, with things like in two or three of our schools, future problem solvers, these things dictate schedules and they're going to dictate smaller learning communities. In addition, DLI is going to do this. And these combinations of things and advanced learner opportunities that... I understand that there will be some clustering and some, and some segregated practices. But I, but I do, I do hope that that's monitored very, very closely and minimized to the extent it can be. That, that, that's, that's a continuing concern of mine. Additionally, I guess that, that, that has to do with the smaller learning communities and master scheduling. Yeah, that's about it. Those are my big concerns. Dean?
I didn't get a chance to read the whole Hanover report there, but, excuse me a second. Hit you right in the nose. Anyway, I couldn't. The, but some of the recommendations in there. And your acknowledgement of middle schools being, I, I don't like the term "black hole," but it's like, this, this whole thing is under examination and we're wondering what we're, all around the country, what we can do differently. So some of the things in there, I keep saying maybe we should slow things down. I've said it at a couple of meetings. I don't quite have that specifically in my head. But what I think I'm getting at is an opportunity for a teacher to really take the time to develop a relationship with the kid so that they can determine what's going on. So particularly if the kid isn't succeeding to where they should be and struggling a lot. And I'm wondering if consideration of the block time is kind of what, what I mean when I'm saying, slow it down. But we're just extending the times to give the tutor, the, the teacher and the student an opportunity to, to, to develop that relationship at that time. So the block schedule wouldn't be, I don't think, of that dramatic a change. I think what is a dramatic change is taking an elementary kid that's been sitting in one class pretty much the whole time and then sending them to a middle school and zipping them all around the, the building. That seems like a dramatic change. So I think slowing it down would be, that would be an example of the kind of things that I'm trying to, to put my head around, where maybe we shouldn't, maybe we should just, you know, let them sit in a room with one teacher for two hours. And then do it, that might be something that they're trying to get at here. What do you think?
I'm sure it's green this time. Um, I appreciate that the Hanover report, as one research study shows, that block scheduling is definitely something that is beneficial for adolescents. Through the master scheduling work that we are doing, we're first focusing on kind of where our 12 middle schools are. I think it's important to recognize that between the 12 middle schools, they all are in very different places. And so what I would call in terms of, I say stabilizing, I don't know if that's the right terminology, but trying to get them to more of some consistency is important. The second piece is we are looking at scheduling models that we have gathered, some being block scheduling and, and other options as well. And we're going to start to look at those through our cross-functional team and then also have conversations with our middle schools around that to start to identify potential new scheduling models that will fit kind of our values and beliefs of what we want to see in middle school. So that is definitely a consideration. And I would say what we know about those longer periods of time, it also allows for places where you want to do some integrated work or some interdisciplinary work, where it's, where it would fit for a school to be able to do things like that, lots more hands-on as opposed to this every 45-minute block of time. It allows kids to go deeper, so that is something we are looking at.
James?
Just one quick follow-up.
Dean, then James.
My, my point of bringing this to you is, is that we, our priority this year is, is building this sense of belonging and developing relationships. And it's, it's not good enough for us to say that's our priority without actually setting ourselves up in a way to allow our staff to develop the relationships that we're supposed to do, that, that they know and we all know will, will help them and help the student. So without, so some of the suggestions in here are the way you go about doing it. So you have to do that, you have to get time. So how does it, how do you change the, the hole stressed out? Speed it up, get it all done now in, in a way to allow that teacher to get the time. So I think those types of real proposals and changes is the only thing we can do to make developing relationships the goal real. So we have to change how we do it. So it includes the, the appropriate professional development to, to, to a lot of our staff that haven't had a lot of interactions with people and that aren't like them. And, and then give them the time to do it. So I think this is what I'm, I, I, I want to see, see us thinking more along those lines and some real proposals to be able, people, so, so staff be able to do that.
James, and then Kate?
Sorry.
Yeah, you know, a lot of times I don't know what to make of these big studies like Hanover. I, I tend to think more about what we hear and our experiences here in our district. For example, you know, we just, we're talking about the strategic framework and emphasizing, you know, the areas or the students that have been underachieving and how do we, how do we improve on those students? And, and so then when I think about the students who've come before us and spoke and the staff that's come before us and spoke, I tend to value what they have to say above all else. And then when I look at Hanover, you know, they talk about things like key findings. I think teachers work across departments with a set of, a group of students, sounds good. Highly successful middle schools are more likely to use block scheduling. I'm not saying that's not important or not correct, but I, no one ever mentioned that. When we talk to our students, they talk about things like relationships and things of that nature. And so even school start times, I, I'm not going to argue with the academy of pediatrics. But I never, my kids, I never did talk to them. If they had to be at school at 7:30, they had to be at school at 7:30. I didn't argue, they didn't argue about that. I always told them, "Look, if you want 8:30, make it to high school, then you get 8:30." So, yeah, so, I mean, we get all these things that, you know, I, I'm not going to debate, you know, I know a lot of research behind them and all. But sometimes I just wonder if these things take us off track. We have our students of color, we have our staff of color telling us what, what's important and what they think needs to be done. And I think it's great sometimes to see a research coming in that's consistent with what some of our own students and staff is telling us. So I don't know what to make sometimes of these big studies like Hanover and some of the, some of the findings. And I know we talk a lot about research. I've worked in research all my life, so I understand it from infancy to publication, I understand it. But also understand how it has to be applied, and then sometimes you can't apply it in every aspect. I, I think what's important is, is listening to our staff and our students. And, and so, I don't know. So how do you take the strategic framework work, the things our staff and students have been saying in Hanover? How do you melt it together to really come up with, you know, where we need to go in terms of, you know, what we talked about here, our priority is increasing achievements with those kids that have been underserved?
I don't have an answer for you, but I'll tell you what I think.
Okay.
I think two ways that we are doing that. One, the Hanover report was just some background because that was what was used last year. So we just wanted to bring that back to show some research. But I would say two ways that I think we are starting to get at what we're hearing from our students is what I know the master schedule sounds like a very technical piece. But the master schedule is what everything a school does and values is hinged on. Meaning if we want to have kids have voice and choice in coursework, it's there. If we want to make sure kids have access to, to any kind of advanced coursework, it's there. If we want to make sure kids are supported for interventions or anything else, it's all from the master schedule. So I think that's why we're putting a lot of emphasis to begin with into the master schedule. As a system, we have not spent kind of time centrally or at schools to really help schools develop a master schedule that meets the needs of 21st century learners. We've been operating on master schedules that were created, honestly, potentially decades ago. So I think that that is something that we're focused on. And I would say the second thing in here is this idea of small learning communities, which is where I think those relationships are able to be built. To Dean's point about block scheduling, that is one way. But the idea of a small learning community where you have a small set of teachers that know the students well and you have a group of students starting to know each other very well and work together as opposed to being kind of thrown across an eight-period day as an individual, I feel like that is another way that we are really listening to what our kids are saying around these intimate relationships, around knowing each other well and knowing their teacher as well. So I think that's two places where I would say that we believe the work we're starting at middle school is building off of what we're hearing directly from our students and also from our staff.
Kate?
So I'm really supportive of this scheduling work, so I'm excited to see what comes from that. Two questions. One, it, it sounded like there is an implicit principle in something you said earlier that I just kind of wanted to test, which is building more similarity among schedules among different schools. Is that true? Is that where we're trying to go, or is there any...
Yeah, I think that's a great question. I think in a sense, I think there's a couple of things that we would like to see across our middle schools, common planning time for our teachers, an advisory time for students, or sometimes they call it crew, sometimes they call it a homeroom, a time where teachers have a group of students that they're doing advisory with. We want to see that. And then some other parameters. So I wouldn't say that we need to see all 12 middle schools look the exact same and have the exact same structure. But we want to hold on to a few key components that we think are essential for adolescents. And then from there, allow schools, because our schools are very different contexts. Badger Rock, for example, which is, you know, doing a lot of project-based learning. Potentially we'll have a schedule looking different as long as we can see that there's these essential components. And I think what we'll also learn is what we learned from doing these scheduling consultations and digging into scheduling more, how much of that would be consistent versus a few of these key components.
Great. Yeah, no, I mean, I, I would not want to push all of our schools to have identical schedules. I think that they have, we have value in difference there, so. The second question is, how are we thinking through curricular changes as they might relate to some of the opportunities unlocked by schedule changes? So, I mean, we have a huge opportunity to drive kind of more relevant, our arts, like a, a lot of stuff that I can imagine being incredibly exciting for students and staff. a, a lot of stuff that I can imagine being incredibly exciting for students and staff. What's the process to think through that?
Yeah, so that's another great question and it's a question, or conversation that we have had internally as well as with the cross-functional team. One of the things that has come up is our, what we call our unified arts or elective offerings at our middle schools. They're probably as antiquated in some ways as the scheduling practices. And so we are in the process of thinking about what new courses we would want to offer at the schools that are more aligned to what our students want. We have, we have kids who want to do coding and STEM opportunities and hip-hop pedagogy and, I mean, these are just a few examples. So as we continue to think about where we're going with the future of like the adolescent experience and what we want to see in our middle schools, we are strongly considering how we want to make some shifts to some of those offerings that still will align with some of our requirements that we have through DPI, but that we can teach it and, and offer it in a new way that is definitely going to meet 21st century learners.
Lisa? And I also think that shift to the traditional sort of seven or eight-period day to a block comes with some thoughtful professional development for teachers and staff too. You know, how do you manage and use a longer block of time with kids and get the most out of it? It isn't just stretching out, you know, a 45-minute class, but it will be really important to support staff as they decide locally what kind of schedules they want to move to to increase access, how to maximize those minutes and also how to team, team both horizontally and vertically, six, seven, eight, and within the core teams to really maximize the talents that they have amongst themselves as teachers.
So that, I mean, this is, what's, what's the kind of timeline for identifying? Feels like that's a real work in a very short amount of time, but.
Can you clarify your timeline for which piece? I just wanted to make sure.
For schedule and curriculum?
Yeah, so this is not anything that is all going to take place in 1819. This is kind of working through 1819 to potentially 1920. For 1819, just to be clear in terms of the master scheduling, we're having each school do some tweaks to untangle intervention and world language or avid and world language to create more access and opportunity for students in the areas of our challenging coursework and world language. And then we will continue scheduling conversations with our middle schools to examine new full scheduling models that may include this idea of a block scheduling and then begin to think about what some of that coursework would look like as early as 1920, but definitely not for 1819. Yeah, no, no. Because we're like, we're like behind almost already for scheduling allocation, all of that. So we're doing that for 1819 and then continuing.
That makes more sense. Okay, fantastic.
Anna, then maybe Mary. I thought I heard Mary.
Yeah, thanks, TJ.
All right, so Anna, then, then Mary.
Just a couple of comments, a question. Early on last year, who, who did you all talk to when you were coming up with these six main things? I'm sure you mentioned it, I just don't recall.
So there was over 600 people that gave input from families to community members, to teachers, to staff, students, parents. I'm looking over at my colleagues over there to make sure I captured everything, but it was 600 plus people.
Okay, they participated in like survey?
Yes, in focus groups, yes.
And then did that get broken down into like a, a guiding team? You talked about it. What, what's your team called? The adolescent?
The cross func, it's just a cross-functional team, yes.
Okay. And does that include any educators, teachers in, in the school?
Yeah, great question. So we have teachers, we have MTI reps, we have principals, and then central office staff, yes.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah, including guests, special ed, there's a special ed teacher.
So my comments would just be, right now, we're in the midst of a lot of, I, I feel like quite a few different initiatives and changes and plans. And so moving forward, I would just make sure that we're moving slow, slowly, carefully and not overwhelming schools with so many changes. I do get concerned because I, I feel like we have some other plans in place that we still need to be focusing on, so to bring out another plan on top of that, I, I don't know if it'll be helpful or harmful to the schools. Another thing I would just say, small learning communities, I would agree with what TJ was saying, that I, I would hate to see them be moved into an opportunity to further segregate kids. If we're really talking about this as a place of relationship building, I, I don't think this needs to be a time of all small learning communities of advanced learners or kids in remedial reading and that type of stuff. This would be an opportunity to diversify people's perspectives and opportunities to interact with people. And then also under the unified arts options, the ones that you talked about, I work in the community a lot, especially with kids that aren't actually regularly attending school. And what I'm hearing from them is that they're really interested in having options around vocational trades, hands-on, authentic learning experiences. So I, I would like to see the district look at that a bit more, particularly in the middle school area, because that's where I think we lose a lot of our students because they don't see the learning to be relevant and it's hard to recapture them in high school then.
Okay, Mary?
Yeah, thank you, TJ. And thanks, Cindy, for the work. I appreciate that the, that the next step where you talk about looking at what, more research about other things that have been done, models to explore different national models that support and strengthen elective learning. But my concern is while these all sound good, and I can imagine 600 people all giving their input, it doesn't have the, the depth for me to say why this is actually going to really work. And it's, these are organizational, small learning communities, master scheduling are basically different packaging. And I'm not convinced that it's going to have a dramatic impact and, and I don't even know if you intend to say it's going to have a dramatic impact. So what I, what I'm feeling is a, is a lack of adherence around exactly what we're trying to accomplish and exactly why these things are going to work. And then the process by which we actually go about testing our theory. Because we're not trying to, we're not saying, okay, well, we all believe because all 600 of us started talking in the same circles to each other, meeting up at our acceptable parameters around which we develop our models, what we actually don't know. And so rather than spending five, 10 years implementing models across 11 schools that we really don't know are going to accomplish what we want to accomplish, we have a process to be using the theory to evaluate the, the real impact on the student experience.
Do you want to respond to that?
I, I don't have an actual response to that. I'm taking that in as feedback, so I appreciate that I don't have anything to respond.
Three things then that I'd like to, one is picking up on Mary is that I think that, one of the things that I think that would be very useful for the board with this process is some kind of baseline and flow chart. I really don't know how seventh grade at White Horse is organized. I mean, I, I don't know that. I know how, you know, I know how it is at Sennett, I know how it is at Hamilton, I don't know how it is. I know sixth grade is different than seventh grade and, and, so I think that some kind of thing with that. And then secondarily, you know, I think, kind of hearing from, from Mary that, you know, number one is, do we have success that correlates with different organizational models? Because we do have great systematic ones and controlling through demographics and things like that. Can we look at that locally? And can we look at perhaps, you know, I know Mary likes the lean pilots and looking at pieces along those lines. And so, and then the final thing I want to say is that, you know, I just pulled up, and I actually pulled it up this morning in a different context, looking at Forward data because Forward, because Forward there, if you look at Forward scale scores, for African-American students and students in poverty, we are essentially flat from sixth to, sixth to eighth grade, essentially flat. This isn't true of statewide numbers, it isn't true of our other demographic groups. So middle school is, you know, it is where, at least as measured by the Forward exam and also similar numbers with the MAP exam, it is where progress stops with some of our most challenging students. And so this work, whatever we're doing here, is absolutely essential to the goals that we were discussing earlier to be, because it's, I mean, it stops. You know, i- i- it's, and in fact, I think our, our seventh graders are below our sixth graders in, in African-American seventh graders in, in scale scores on Forward. Our eighth graders are below our third-grade white students on scale scores. Our eighth-grade African-American students are below our third-grade white students. This is not, this is, this is the, you know, this middle school is, is, is key, so we do have to get this right. That's my final thought. Anyone else?
Get it right, yeah.
Or do we, is this now, do we entertain a motion to adjourn or is there more to be said? Cindy's got something to say and I think Jen does too.
No, I would just say that's precisely why the middle school adolescent learner work exists. I mean, you guys all know, middle school is our focus. I think we're trying to figure out this balance of monitoring the pace, which several of you brought up, right? How much can we always take on at once and do well? And, and understanding full well the urgency for making change. And there are, I mean, we know, I mean, the reason that master scheduling is on the table is because there are structural barriers that are getting in the way in addition to others that, yeah, that are preventing our students and our staff from being successful. So Cindy's going to be back with a much more fleshed-out proposal when?
It'll be back in, no, in March. I will be back in March.
Yeah, so this is just kind of a, to give you a sense of where she is and what she's thinking, but we'll be back in March with a major item on this topic.
Kate? Can I just add on the, on the lean idea here? I mean, we just talked about one of our goals for the district being accelerating progress for African-American youth. So while I appreciate the need to go slow and I certainly want this work to be aligned with what we're coming out of the strategic framework with, I also feel like we need to push pretty hard on it. And one way to possibly do that would be to push really hard to pilot even bigger changes in a couple of schools next year, just one or two, right? And then slow, slow down for others. And then we can learn as we go. I just, it's just a thought, but I just, I want to at least throw out there that we have three, we're talking about having three goals for the district.
It is a thought that we've had as well, including as recent as our Friday, like central office leadership team meeting. So it's very much in alignment with our own thinking. Very helpful, good to know what your parameters are, concerns, the push for change, using some of the concepts that Mary described. So, thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Laura, your advisory?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.[1763.91]